All right, I'm gonna go ahead and call the DeKalb City Council Regular Meeting of May 22nd, 2023 to order. Roll call, please.
Here.
Larson.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Perkins.
Here.
McAdams.
Here.
Verbic.
Here.
Walker.
Here.
Mayor Barnes.
Here.
A present.
All right, now for the Pledge of Allegiance. Can I have Captain Voluntary Action Center? Ah, there he is. He'll lead us in the pledge tonight.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Gentry. Moving on to approval agenda, item C. I'll take a motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderwoman Larson. Roll call. Well, any questions or comments? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Zasada.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
A I.
Agenda has been approved. Then we'll move on to public, or presentations. Number one, proclamation for National Public Works Week, May 21st through 2027. So whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high-quality life and the well-being of the people of DeKalb. And whereas these infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential to our citizens. And whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in DeKalb to gain knowledge of and to maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. And whereas the year 2023 marks the 63rd Annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association, Canadian Public Works Association. Now therefore, I, Cohen Barnes, Mayor of the City of DeKalb, Illinois, do hereby designate the week, May 21st through 27, 2023, as National Public Works Week and urge all citizens to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association and government agencies in activities, events, and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the sustainable contributions they make to protecting our nation's health, our national health, safety, and quality of life. That is the National Public Works Week. Mr. Rye. All right, let's get on there, council.
These guys are absolutely amazing at what they do. That man there, Mike Taylor, it'll be January 13th, 30 below, and there's a water being brained. And you're gonna see him on the backhoe. He's gonna hop off that backhoe, and he's gonna hop down the hole, just like any of these, to keep our water flowing, right, our services going. And what do they ask for? They come in, they do the job, and they do it absolutely incredibly. So I can't say enough how much I appreciate all the work that you all do. It's absolutely phenomenal. But you can't stand up to the side. I have to come over here. Wait, where are you? Get up here. The whole team. No, I need to team. Short guys in practice. And you.
Where's Alderman Smith at?
What?
The radar tomorrow is 7th Street, so we're gonna...
You know, proclamations are a fun part of all this because it is a way that we can take a moment and just recognize from EMTs, the public works, to our elderly, and just remember that we're all one big community here. And it takes a community to do the things we're doing. And it's important that we take a moment to recognize everyone in our community. So I have two more to do. Proclamation number two, EMS Week, where emergency care begins, May 21st through 2027, 2023. Whereas emergency medical services is a vital public service, and whereas the members of emergency medical services teams are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. And whereas emergency medical services has grown to fill a gap by providing important out-of-hospital care, including preventive maintenance, medicine, follow-up care, and access to telemedicine. And whereas the emergency medical services system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, pre-hospital nurses, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, trained members of the public, and other out-of-hospital medical care providers. And whereas the members of the emergency medical services teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills. And whereas it is important to recognize the value and the accomplishments of emergency medical services providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. Now therefore, I, Cohen Barnes, Mayor of the City of DeKalb, Illinois, in recognition of this event, do hereby proclaim the week of May 21st through 2027, 2023, as Emergency Medical Services Week with the EMS Strong theme, EMS Week, where emergency care begins, and encourage the community to observe this week with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities. Let's give a round of applause for our EMTs. We can air that in public, that's all right. All right, our last proclamation, but not least by any means, is Older Americans Month. So Older Americans Month, May 2023. Whereas DeKalb includes a growing number of older Americans who contribute their time, wisdom, and experience to our community. And whereas communities benefit when people of all ages, abilities, and backgrounds have the opportunity to participate and live independently. And whereas the City of DeKalb recognizes the need to create a community that offers the services and supports older adults may need to make choices about how they age. And whereas DeKalb can work to build an even better community for our older residents by not limiting our thinking about aging, exploring and combating spirit stereotypes, emphasizing the many positive aspects of aging, inspiring older adults to push past traditional boundaries, and embracing our community's diversity. Now therefore, I, Cohen Barnes, Mayor of the City of DeKalb, Illinois, do hereby proclaim May 2023 to be Older Americans Month and urge every resident to celebrate our older citizens, help to create an inclusive society, and accept the challenge of flexible thinking around aging. Let's give a round of applause for all of our... So is there someone here to accept this? Just making sure. An older American? There she is. All right, moving on to agenda item D, presentations, or no, number four of presentations. We have a presentation by Sam Schwartz Consulting regarding the comprehensive study of the potential for commuter rail to and from DeKalb. But I do have a public comment from Mark Charvat, who swears it'll be 15 to 20 seconds. Mark, go ahead.
I know we're all gonna have a chance to discuss this, and you might want to promote the meetings coming up. The district may levy a tax on property within the district should this go through of no greater than 0.25%, a quarter of 1% of the assessed value of such property. This has not been discussed much at all. I've not heard any narratives regarding this. Basically, a $300,000 house could be taxed an extra $750 per year forever. Every homeowner, so the question to ask Metro users, do you use $750 a year to travel back and forth to Elburn? And if you don't, you're gonna pay that tax anyway. I'm not against the project, but the true costs need to be expressed to the public. $750 a year taxes.
Yep. And that's why we're just in phase one of this whole process. All right, presentation by Sam Schwartz. City manager, I don't know if you want to kick it off or have them kick it off.
I'll just introduce our...
That's phenomenal.
Presenter. How about that? Go ahead, Matt. Make your way up there. So we're very pleased to have had an opportunity to work with Sam Schwartz Consulting for the last four months, roughly, just by way of reference for people who are just showing up tonight and wondering what's all this about. Back in mid-October, the council determined that it was time to see what might be involved in extending commuter rail service to DeKalb. We circulated a request for proposals, received those just before the holidays. In early January, the first meeting in January, I presented results of that. We had two firms from Chicagoland area that had expressed their interest, and we recommended, and the council approved, Sam Schwartz Consulting. Matt is a principal with the firm, has been before you a number of times now, first back in January, and then back about a month ago when the first two pieces of the three-piece study were complete, and that was to look at ridership and so forth. Tonight, we're looking at it all, but we're also now incorporating some very provisional numbers, just to give you an idea at this very, very early stage what the capital and the operating cost might be. We've been in conversation with Metro and Union Pacific for, on a number of occasions for obvious reasons. And Matt will get into why they are important players in this whole process. So without any further ado, Matt.
Okay, thank you. Yes, so thank you for the invite. And I was here six weeks ago on April 10th to discuss kind of an interim update for the study, but now it's much more complete, so we have some good key findings to share with you. And, you know, before I get into the slides here, a couple things. First, it took five months to complete the feasibility study. There is an exciting opportunity here. There's a lot of potential. But I think the key to everything is partnerships and thinking about, you know, how to collaborate with regional stakeholders, with the state of Illinois. There are dollars out there, I think, you know, to the gentleman's comment about, you know, the true cost of this. There is potential to share that cost with other stakeholders. So it's not just all on the burden of the city here. So if I do this, okay, so I'm gonna take you through, I've got 10 slides. These are our key facts, our key findings from the feasibility study. It's pretty dense, so I'll try and go through it fast, but, you know, please stop me if there's anything you want to ask. So a feasibility study like this, and, you know, we set out knowing that we wanted to look at the Metro extension, but it's good at the beginning to think about the purpose and need of the study. You know, why was this, why are we here? Why, what are we doing? So of course, there's currently limited options to travel without a car to the Chicago metropolitan area. A Metro extension would knit DeKalb into the economic ecosystem, connect it more with the metropolitan area, and, you know, aid in the economic expansion that you all are currently experiencing. Of course, Northern Illinois University is the only state school in Illinois without access to nearby rail stations, so it's important to think about that and all the benefits that may come from the university connecting in with the rest of Chicago. And then 14% of current NIU students originate in the western suburbs. And I've got a map, a couple slides down, that I think, you know, better illustrates what that looks like. So this is our purpose and need. This is why we started the study and the things that we wanted to look into further with the feasibility study. So, and I talked about this a little bit when I was here on April 10th, but, you know, the first step with the feasibility study is to define the travel market, to think about who's traveling, where they're going, you know, what are kind of the key movements that are occurring between DeKalb County and the rest of the Chicago area. So the slide you see here in the map, this was something, and I talked about this as a talking point, that, you know, we used replicas, a software service that tracks, you know, cellphone users, and that we found from that, that within DeKalb County, 10,800 people are traveling daily between DeKalb and the communities along the Union Pacific West line. So you can see there, the darker the color, these are the places where more people are going to from DeKalb County. We counted everything, you know, along the line, plus the city of Chicago itself. So that's where that 10,800 number comes from. That's, you know, if there's 100,000 people in DeKalb, 10% are doing some sort of connection into the Chicago metropolitan area, which I think is important to keep in mind. We also wanted to define the current service, so, you know, we looked at the Union Pacific West schedule. Union Pacific West Line is operated by Metro, currently travels between Elburn and Ogilvy Transportation Center. If you pull the latest schedule as of April of 2023, 23 daily weekday round trips, 10 Saturday round trips, nine Sunday round trips between Elburn and Chicago. And then the other thing that I think that's important to think about with the current service is that Route 12, you know, the DeKalb Public Transit is operating Route 12 between here and Elburn. So there's 10 round trips per weekday, and I know Mike has said, you know, that the ridership has really taken off with that increase in service, that, you know, it's basically a recognition that there's a lot of demand for that connection there. So that's what's currently being operated. Potential service. So one of the things we wanted to do is identify and look into what a potential schedule would look like. And this actually matters when we get into some of the operating costs, because the amount of service that you're operating, then, you know, the cost is reflective of the amount of service that you're operating. So, you know, we wanted to define three different levels. We did a low, a medium, and a high, where we looked at the schedule and picked out certain trips that would be extended to DeKalb. And you can see, I've got these maps here with NIU. Employees is the top one, and then Students by Local Zip Code is the bottom one. And those maps were important to us when we were looking at service levels, because the NIU travel market, the people that are traveling to NIU, and the people that live here that, you know, are associated with the university but want to connect into Chicago, those people are probably traveling at different times a day. It's not your typical, you know, get up and travel at 7:00 a.m. into the city and then come back at 5:00 p.m. They're traveling at noon, at, you know, 7 o'clock at night for, you know, an event in the city on weekends. So it was important to tie that back to our service levels that we defined with our, you know, different schedules that we were identifying there. So, and again, this zip code information, this is where that 14% of students, you know, originating in the western suburbs, that's, there's a sort of dark purple band, you know, around St. Charles and Geneva. I think it's really kind of interesting, because, you know, if you're moving from farther away to come to NIU, you're gonna live here locally. But if you live 20, 25 miles away, you're gonna be a commuter student. Some of those students may benefit from the train connection. So this is what one of our schedules looked like that we created for the feasibility study. And what we wanted to do here was look at the expected travel time. So it would take about 20 minutes to travel between Elburn and DeKalb if Metro was extended. And then the overall travel time into Ogilvy Transportation Center in downtown Chicago would be between 90 and 105 minutes on weekdays. One of the things you have to pay attention to even in early in a feasibility study is, you know, what is that compared to auto travel times? And so we wanted to make sure that the travel there and the connections would actually work in that sense. And, you know, when you consider traffic congestion and some of those things, it is competitive with that connection. So then, we started to get into some of the benefits and costs of, and this, again, is, you know, what you do with the feasibility studies, you're exploring, you know, what are the benefits, what are the costs of doing a project like this? So we did look into potential ridership. The way we did this is we, again, took the replica information, that 10,800 number. So we wanted to see all those people that were connecting between DeKalb County and the city and the UP West communities. And then we wanted to apply how likely it is that those people would take public transportation. And the way we did that is created a little index that's based on socioeconomic factors, things like how high of income, if they have access to an automobile, education levels, things like that. And created an index where, you know, we ranked and said, these are places where more people are likely to use public transportation, these are places that are less likely. And then ran that through our matrix to come up with our overall daily ridership. So we estimate right now 259 daily trips on weekdays and 189 daily trips on weekends. And what's, the one caveat, I think, here is that none of this, the numbers here reflect the schedules. That, you know, if you run four trips a day, or if you run 12 trips a day, or if you run 16 trips a day, you're gonna have a different number of people that are riding, because it's easier to access the city and it's more convenient. Here, because it's high level and, you know, it's the first phase of study, what we really wanted to do is just take a high-level look at, you know, how, what that travel market looks like and how many people would be likely to traveling. Think if you continue the study, one thing you would want to do is start to get a little more specific about your ridership estimate. And again, I think this is where NIU comes into play, where you would want to look at that non-traditional market, because the ridership here is biased towards that traditional commute, that sort of AM inbound in the morning and PM back out in the afternoon. Key stakeholders. So, you know, when we started outlining the project, it's clear early on, you know, that there are important stakeholders that need to be brought into the process. And this is where I think that collaborative, you know, nature of the feasibility study has lent itself. So we reached out to and spoke with Union Pacific. Of course, they own the tracks between Elburn and DeKalb. So we interacted with them and discussed the project with them, and got some good feedback on infrastructure needs. We have presented, interacted with Metro on a number of occasions. Of course, they operate the Union Pacific West Line from Elburn and would need to agree to the extension. And so they're obviously a very important stakeholder in that sense. And then Chicago RTA. So RTA is the transit administrator for the Chicago region, the six counties. And they collect the sales tax and disperse it to the operators. And they are another part of that whole stakeholder piece that you would have to interact with as this project moves forward. So costs. And so this is where we explored both operating costs. So those are your annual cost of operating the train service. Of course, it's not the full cost of operating the train service, it's a little piece of what it would cost Metro to operate everything from DeKalb into downtown Chicago. The majority of that cost is still, you know, within the Chicago RTA, the six county area. So, you know, the money that they're already collecting pays for the majority of that service. So what we're really looking at here is that incremental cost of adding to the service, extending it from Elburn West to DeKalb. And we came up with a range of costs. These are dependent on the schedules that we developed. So if you have four trips a day that you're proposing to operate, your cost is less than if you're proposing to operate 16 trips a day. So the green is the low-cost scenario, the low-schedule scenario. The orange is the medium one, and the red is the high-cost one. So it's all tied to those schedules that we developed. The range of cost annually is between 8.2 and 12.8 million dollars. So this is money that would have to be procured each year in order to operate the service. I think what's kind of noteworthy about this is that a lot of those costs are actually fixed costs, so there's fixed and variable. The fixed cost you pay no matter what, and it's sort of set at a, you know, certain number. And of course, you would work with Metro on determining what that is. And then the variable cost is tied to the amount of service that you're operating. What's noteworthy is that if you go from four train trips to 12 train trips a day, you don't actually triple your operating cost, because so much of that is, you know, baked in as fixed. So, you know, the low, the green, is $8 million. But if you tripled your daily service, it only ends up costing $11 million. And so that additional cost is all sort of that variable additional service. So the overall operating cost that we have there in blue is 11 million. That's kind of that medium scenario. The thing about the medium scenario that's important is, again, that NIU travel market, the fact that there's a lot of benefit to be derived from people traveling at different times of day. We looked into capital costs. And again, this is where it was important to interact with Union Pacific. They have two train tracks between Elburn and DeKalb. They indicated during one of our early meetings that a third mainline track would be very important to them. It would be the thing that they would be looking for out of an infrastructure project. So in order to get them, you know, to be agreeable or to negotiate on the service, that is one of the things that we learned in the course of our exploration here. So we have an estimated capital cost of 258 to 388 million dollars. That is in 2023 dollars. That would be a singular expenditure. It's not renewable like the operating cost. It would include things like a third mainline track, retaining walls, rehabilitation of the existing DeKalb station, so, you know, people have a place to board, and then new train sets. So one of the things we heard from Metro is that, and, you know, we know that when you extend a schedule like this, you end up requiring more rail cars and more locomotives in order to meet the schedule that Metro already has out on the rails. So this range, and I know it sounds high, and of course, it's got a lot of things, sort of, you know, assumptions into it. A couple things. The range is because of unallocated contingency. So there's a 50% unknown associated with this, because it's such an early stage of study. It's a feasibility study. As you go through the process, you would narrow down your range of costs. And then the other thing is, this is an overall cost, but it's not the amount of money that the city or whoever would sort of be in at the local level would have to pay. There's lots of grants in different ways earmarks that can be associated with a project like this that can help you along the way. And so that's one of the things that we wrote up in our final report, is, you know, here are the grant programs that we think are most applicable to something like this, and then, you know, what the potential dollars would be that could come into the community and help move the project along. And I think that includes both federal grants and then also potentially state grants as well. And then additional governance. So, and I think this was some of what the comment was referring to about the property tax. And a lot of this is tied back to, you know, the stakeholders, right? The way to make the project go forward is, the stakeholders need to understand that you've got, you know, real money backing the project. And so we looked into ways that you would need to do that. And the two leading possibilities are either to create a local mass transit district or petition to become part of the RTA service area. So as I mentioned, the six RTA counties, Cook, Lake, McHenry, Kane, et cetera. DeKalb would petition to be part of the Chicago RTA. That's one of the options. But I have here in blue the creation of the mass transit district, because I think it keeps control sort of locally. Now, the big thing here is that you would have to enter into a purchase of service agreement with Metro. So, you know, obviously, you'd have to work through the stakeholders there. But that would allow you to levy a property tax that you could use to operate the service, and then pay for a portion of the capital costs. And then the last item there, can contract with local government with broader taxation authority for funding. That's basically saying that the, if you created a mass transit district, it would sort of be a separate agency, but that it would work with, say, the City of DeKalb or Sycamore in order to, you know, be able to operate the service and, you know, create something that was useful, a public good for, you know, the local community. I think that's it, but we got one more, which is on next steps. I think a couple of things. It's an exciting week. We have public engagement for this week. Tomorrow, in this room, we are doing an in-person open house between 6:00 and 8:00. And so we'll have some boards set up. It'll be the information you saw here. And, you know, I'm looking forward to that. It'll be a good way to engage local community and get good feedback on needs and wants, and, you know, feedback on those costs, et cetera. On Thursday, there is a virtual public meeting. So this would be on Zoom, and I think it's been promoted on the social media. It'll look a little different than an open house, because, you know, if we're on Zoom, we'll have to actually... have to actually talk and present something. So, we'll present a version of the presentation you see here. And then, what we're going to do is record that, and then, you'll be able to, you know, put that on the website or, you know, promote it on social media in case people have further questions. And then, further planning out, these are the steps along the way, the planning process. There would be a planning and environmental linkages study, that would be a recommended next step, should you want to continue with the project. And what that would do is select a locally preferred alternative, that would be, it's a legal title of what you want to do, basically, the project that you want to complete. And then, there's a couple of other things. You would work through the National Environmental Protection Act, environmental clearance work, you'd have to do design and engineering down the road. And then, the third one there is the potential funding, so I already mentioned that, you know, that there are federal and state grant programs and earmarks. Local match of at least 20%. So, for those capital costs, 20% would be the lowest amount of local contribution. And usually, the federal government is looking for more when you enter into a grant agreement. And so, with that, happy to take your questions.
Well, before I open up for questions for Matt, City Manager, I didn't know if you wanted to elaborate on some-
All I was going to add is, I made a suggestion, not even a recommendation, toward the end of this presentation, which was that, based on our partnership to date with NIU in this study, that after we've been able to collect the public information from these various sessions that Matt described and it's on your board there, we will get together with them and see what their taste is for further study and analysis, and then, we'll come back to you with a recommendation.
Counsel, questions, comments? Yes, Alderman Larson.
Okay, so, between Elburne and DeKalb, you have Cortland and Maple Park and part of Elburne. Who's responsible to make sure that there's enough room in those communities to have a third rail?
So, we did look into that. And I don't think, can I go backwards, or maybe I can't?
He'll figure it out, if you tell him where you want to go.
Yep. There. So, we did look into this. There is 100 feet of right-of-way on the Union Pacific Railroad. You can actually fit a third track within that right-of-way. So, that was one of the things we developed, the capital cost, is we don't have a lot of cost for right-of-way in there, because it already exists. You, and-
And how about all the crossings? Because there's probably between eight and 10 crossings between DeKalb and Elburne.
Right. So, what's your question about the crossings?
Like, so, the cost of those crossings that are like in Cortland and Kane County and whatever, who, is that part of our cost to get the third rail out here, or is our cost really DeKalb city limits and then somebody else has to?
Oh, no, it's the full cost for the full 14.8 miles. But I think, you know, it's interesting, because that's one of the questions here, right, is how much of a regional project is this? How much of an important project is it for NIU versus, you know, the very local concerns that you have here?
Thank you.
Other comments? Alderman Zazada.
Thank you. So, you did say toward the end there that 20% city match or local match is important. Do you anticipate that up to 80% could be covered by grants?
Possible.
How possible? Skill-o'-wonderful.
So-
And Matt, that was for the next study, correct?
It's for the-
So, that's for the $500,000 he's talking about, yeah. Yeah, not the-
Oh, I'm sorry.
I was looking for clarification. Are you asking for the total project?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, so-
I'm curious for both.
Yes. Okay, so, the 80/20 match, there's a program through FTA, Federal Transit Administration, so it's federal money, and that's called the Capital Investment Grant Program. And it's called New Starts, sometimes you'll see it referred to as New Starts. That program's been around for 25 years, a very long time. It's gone through changes, you know, different administrations and, you know, people that are cabinet DOT professionals. What's changed recently is the IIJA. So, now, all of a sudden, there's a lot more money in that program, there's a lot more money that the US DOT, the FTA has to spread and, you know, send out to local communities. So, one of the things I'm interested in is seeing whether, so, in previous versions of the New Starts Program, they would say 80/20, but they really wanted like 60/40, you know, 75/25, you know, different ratios. Now, there's so much federal money there, the question is, well, what does that ultimately mean for the thresholds? And we're waiting on new guidance, new criteria, so that we can understand better how this project might qualify for that.
City Manager.
So, we've been transparent about this since the beginning, back in January, when we had our first report and you decided to do this. There's no doubt that there is more federal transit money, as Matt was saying, in channels that are flowing around the country than ever before, and it won't be there forever. And so, if there's an opportunity and if there's been a better opportunity in the last 20 years, I don't think it's existed. So, now's the time to explore it. That's what we're doing. So, some of the next steps, which have to do, say, environmental study, that isn't really going to tap into where can we find support for the capital investment and so forth. That's going to come from some good old-fashioned phone calls and meetings with state and federal officials and different agencies to talk about what might be available, how would we qualify? We have, really, an outstanding bus transit system now, and we haven't had it for that long, it's just been, we're in our fifth year now. And so, that is known, at least in the Upper Midwest, as a going, we just got the commitment for over $20 million for our transit facility. So, they're aware also of the fact that, what you said in the findings at the beginning, you know, we have the only state university that doesn't have commuter connection, and most of our students are first-time college students. And so, in terms of diversity and equity in Northern Illinois and Upper Midwest region, there are factors that play in our favor. So, all that's to be sorted and sifted and brought back to you.
And I've had, in fact, Senator Durbin's office just reached out to me yesterday on, hey, is the rail study done? Send me a copy, would love to set up the time to talk about this. So, I've heard it from Senator's office, from our US Congresswoman, Governor's office, State Senate, State Legislature. A lot of people are really interested in closing the gap for us on rail. So, as Bill was saying, this, if there was ever a time, this is probably the time, if we do it, we need to do it, because there's the most amount of federal dollars available to fund this.
Alderman Perkins.
So, I have two questions that are kind of linked. So, if I understand this correctly, the city would essentially put up the $100,000 for continued investigation, right, for the viability of the rail system?
Local, maybe not just us, but yeah.
Local, but then, the 400 or so would come from a federal pocket somewhere. But then, the next question becomes to the, potentially to the 385 for capital. What are the sources of that going to be realistically? How much of that is realistically, and I know we're early, early in the process.
That's what we have to explore.
But that's why the two are kind of linked, because the one is, all right, do we spend $100 grand for a continued study to find out that we're going to have to cough up $200 million down the road? That's, and I don't know what the numbers are, and I don't, it may be too early to know that, but that's-
Yeah.
Well, the interest, the interest-
That's the abiding, that may, yeah.
Well, real quick, the interest that I'm hearing about is more about funding the build-out.
Right.
And there's extra money for the studies, things like that, but they're really interested in how can we help make sure that we can get rail there? And it's part of that, what'd you say, 250 to 380? Nice range there, by the way. You know, it's just a couple of extra numbers.
I would just add, you know, when you look at future or further planning, Planning and Environmental Linkages Study, that study, and I think what you're referring to, $500,000, is that's a ballpark number to complete that study. What that would do is explore this FTA Capital Investment Grant Program and would look at what ratings you would receive for this particular project. And, you know, that's what I was saying about the criteria that's supposed to come out. When that criteria comes out, you can then gauge it, your project against it. The criteria's changing, it changes every few years. I think IIJA is just now, you know, throwing extra into the system. So, that's what we're-
Do you have any ballpark based on experience?
Well-
And I know, I'm not going to hold your future fire, but I'm just kind of curious, because basically, we're saying, let's spend 100 on something for some undefined-
Sure, which we're not deciding tonight, by the way.
I know, I know.
So, we, so two things. We did, in this study, the final report, we do have three case studies where we looked at other commuter rail systems that have funded expansions. One is Nikti, which is over in Indiana, that runs the South Shore Line into downtown Chicago. They're building a whole new branch of their line, Westlake Corridor. So, we looked at that. I believe that went through the federal New Starts process. A lot of times, these commuter rail projects do not go through the New Starts process. And that's because, in the past, the threshold was really high. And so, it was very difficult, you had to sort of prove a lot of benefit, you know, a lot of riders, a lot of potential. This is what I'm saying, is everything's kind of changed right now, it's a different administration. And, you know, that's where that criteria will really help us gauge, but we really don't know right now.
Okay. City Manager.
Well, we have a busy agenda tonight, I just wanted to say, so, there's no action requested tonight. We have three more steps in our public rollout tonight with the kickoff, basically. And then, we'll visit with our NIU partners and then come back to you in a couple meetings.
Exactly. Yes, Alderman Zazada.
Sorry, I have just two more quick questions, really easy ones. One, you said that 14% of students come from the western suburbs. So, do you have a number from Chicago? Because I feel like they all come from Chicago.
The 14, yeah, it's a good question. The 14% are communities on the Union Pacific West line. So, we took the stations on the-
All the way to Ogilvy.
Yeah, so all the way, so it does include Chicago.
Got it.
And then, I think the number overall is 66% or so come from the Chicago metropolitan area. So, you know, so one-third is coming from the rest of the state and elsewhere. And we actually have that map, we mapped all the zip codes by permanent zip code, and it was kind of interesting to see that and sort of see, you know, Michigan or Wisconsin. Anyway, 14% is from the Union Pacific West, including the city.
Okay. Last question. When you add commuter rail, do you see that property values are increased?
Yeah, so, I don't have data or, you know, I could cite something right now, but yes. In general, and I think you even see this in the Chicago metropolitan area, that, you know, certain places, so, for example, I live in Lake County, and the communities that have good, robust commuter rail access do a lot better, you know, with property values than those that don't. If you're interested, I can follow up with, you know, some, yeah.
General's good, okay.
But yes, there is a value to it down the road, beyond just the riders.
Could offset that tax cost.
Any last questions or comments? Hearing none. Matt, thank you, really appreciate it.
All right, moving on to E, public participation. I have Tom Riley. And just as a reminder, during public participation, you have three minutes.
Okay, my name is Tom Riley. I moved to DeKalb in 2002. I just wanted to let the council know that we have a lot of speeding down Bar Boulevard. I think, I don't want you to put anything out to stop speeders, but it would be nice to have stop signs. Maybe two stop signs at Elizabeth and two stop signs at Second Street. That would slow the traffic down, especially when school gets out, kids don't have to worry about people just barreling through. So, that's all I have to say.
Appreciate it, Tom.
So, if you consider that, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Mark Charvat. As a reminder, three minutes.
I have great concern about the lack of transparency and function of the Police Advisory Board. It is not properly fulfilling its promised duties. The Board was created to be a go-between, between the Police Department and citizens who have concerns about encounters with the City of DeKalb police. As a member of the public, I have regularly attended a majority of the Board meetings and have a few observations I want on the record. The Board this year alone has considered five cases, and not one of the cases has been brought forward for further investigation. Transparency, the meeting minutes are extremely vague. Members of the public who read the minutes have no idea what specific complaints are and the nature of the complaints that have been provided to the Board by citizens. You have to file a FOIA for specifics. Let me go back to the first item. The Commission was created with the intention to promote trust in the community between police and the public. The fact that the Committee has not bothered to pursue or further investigate any of the complaints, I feel, is very problematic. If I'm not mistaken, this was the intended purpose of the Commission. Now, I want to make it clear, I am not stating that any of the complaints so far filed by citizens are actionable or not. However, the fact that the Commission has failed to lift a finger to further investigate any of the complaints is basically sending a message to the community that the citizen complaints reviewed by the Commission are being ignored and the Commission is a joke. On the transparency issue, to obtain details from five cases before the Committee so far, I've had to file a FOIA. By not making the information readily available to the public without filing a FOIA, this leads me to believe that this Committee and the city are not being transparent with the workings of this Commission. The details and backgrounds of all cases filed with the Commission need to be readily accessible to the public, subject to permissible redactions under FOIA. Also, the city took six weeks to supply me with a requested FOIA. I just received word from the Public Access Counselor today that my FOIA was finally forced to be released by the city. It's not a difficult thing to do, to put this information, background information, on published agendas. It would also show that the Committee is doing its work. It is time for, I believe, perhaps, new members of the Commission who are vested in the original intended mission of the Board and transparency. Thank you.
All right, moving on to Pete Vanderbleek. Good evening, sir. And as a reminder, you've got three minutes, I have to hold everyone to that.
Got it, I appreciate the timer, I hope not to take all of it up. Thank you, thank you, Alderman, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm Pete Vanderbleek, a citizen of NIU, a citizen of DeKalb, an NIU-to-townie convert about 30 years now. My wife and I are here tonight, and normally, we can't make it because we're busy, we should be coaching a Little League game tonight, but we feel compelled to set the record straight. On the May 8th meeting of this body, my neighbor and former write-in aldermanic candidate, Mr. Tom Riley of Bar Boulevard, took to this podium and uttered falsehoods about me. Mr. Riley, in his comments, stated that my licensed and operational truck spews oil. At best, this was a mischaracterization, but he didn't stop there. Mr. Riley then stated that he watched me change oil on several vehicles and dumped the used oil into either the sanitor, the storm sewer or the catch basin. This scurrilous accusation in a public forum is nothing short of slander. And I can provide video evidence to contradict Mr. Riley's claims. We're not here to complain to the city. On the contrary, we're here to commend city officials who quickly addressed this issue and learned that Mr. Riley was far from truthful with this group. We're here only to let our fellow citizens of DeKalb know that we are good neighbors and citizens of DeKalb. And we hope that you agree with my, many of my neighbors on Bar Boulevard, that this forum is no place to air personal vendettas. Thank you for all that you do for our fair city of DeKalb. And my wife and I are off to Little League. Thank you for having me.
Thanks, Pete.
I yield my minute and 13 seconds, I've always wanted to say that.
Good luck tonight. All right, moving on to appointments, Agenda Item F. Can we just read them all and then approve them all as one item? Yeah, okay. Appointments, number one, appointment of Andre Powell as Chair of the Human Relations Commission for the completion of a two-year term through December 31st, 2024. Appointment of Tom Riley to the Citizens Environmental Commission for the completion of a two-year term through December 31st, 2024. And number three, appointment of Brandon Elian to the Citizens Community Enhancement Commission for the completion of a three-year term through December 31st, 2025. Can I have a motion to approve these appointments?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Zazada and seconded by, was that you, McAdams?
Yeah.
Alderman McAdams. Questions or comments? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Zazada?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
ADI?
All right, the appointments have been approved. Moving on to Agenda Item G, Consent Agenda. Number one, minutes of the regular City Council Meeting of May 8, 2023. Number two, accounts payable and payroll through May 22nd, 2023 in the amount of $3,767,027.20. Number three, Freedom of Information Act FOIA Report, April 2023. And number four, Crime Free Housing Bureau Report. Can I have a motion to present or approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Walker. Any questions or comments on this? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Zazada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
ADI?
All right, moving on to Agenda Item H, Public Hearings. We have none. Agenda Item I, Considerations, we have none. And Agenda Item J, Resolutions. Resolution, oh, I'm sorry. We wanted to make a modification to the ordinances.
Yes, Mayor. If we could move the ordinances up, our, one of the principles for the Kishawaki Water Reclamation District is here tonight and is on a tight time schedule.
Yes, I apologize. I remember that. So sorry we didn't bring that up earlier. That came to my attention after we approved the order of agenda. But I would take a, and actually, which item are we referring to?
So we'd be moving, we have to move all of them up, so we move the ordinances up before the resolutions.
So we're going to move all the ordinances up
Well, there are not that many.
Above the resolutions. All right. All right, so I would take a motion to move Agenda Item L, ordinances first reading, up to Agenda Item J.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Perkins, seconded by Alderwoman Zazada. Questions or comments? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Zazada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
ADI?
So the modification to our agenda has been approved. Good luck. Me trying to remember all this. All right, so moving on to Agenda Item J, Ordnances First Reading. We have number one, Ordinance 2023-020, Amending Chapter 23 Unified Development Ordinance, UDO, by adding a GS Government Sanitary District and Associated List of permitted uses and conditions of use for the district and amendments to remove the use sewage treatment facilities from SFR-1, SFR-2, TFR, MFR-1, MFR-2, and L1 zoning districts. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved. Second.
Moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman McAdams. City manager.
Thank you, Mayor. And as the, the very long title suggests, we've, we've had an extensive session about how we can solidify a growing and very positive relationship between the city and the Kishawaki Water Reclamation District. Back in late October, at the second meeting in October, the council unanimously approved a resolution, excuse me, a resolution which replaced an intergovernmental agreement between the city and the KWRD and instituted what I think would be best described as a matter of co-equality, co-equal status between the two taxing bodies, not unlike our relationship with NIU or the Park District or any of the other local taxing bodies. KWRD is a taxing body and is, contrary to what was said in the media, I think in a confused moment, they've been a taxing body since the 1920s. And just under now a new organizational form and the agreement was comprehensive. It defines some follow-on matters. And one of those was to institute what that new designation would be for what they're to be called as a, as a unique zoning district. And we were back and forth on that, and, and this is not very sexy, but we decided to call it the Government Sanitary District. And so if another government comes in, in this case, it's GS, and it will be sanitary GS, and then it might be school GS and so forth. As you look at your comprehensive plan now, if you look at it, you will see all these places are colored in some unique colors. Not residential, it's not commercial, it's not industrial and so forth. So to cut to the quick here, the agreement called for this matter to go to the Planning and Zoning Commission, where the new designation would be reviewed and a recommendation would come to you. The Planning and Zoning Commission took on this minor UDO revision on May 15th and recommended unanimously your support. We recommend your support for the sanitary district recommendation.
Questions or comments, council? If we keep this up, we're going to have the best code and ordinances written
We have a ways to go. But this is, this is another important step.
Yes, yes. All right, hearing no other questions or comments. I'd take a, or, roll call, please.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Zazada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
ADI?
Ordinance 2023-020 passes on first reading. I would take a motion to waive second reading.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Alderwoman Larson, seconded by Alderwoman Zazada. Questions or comments on that?
Just something real quick.
Yes.
Dr. Dennis Collins is in the audience tonight. He is the chair of, or the president of the KWRD. I've worked with him for 20, how many years, since the 90s? And his leadership and the leadership of other trustees who have successively served in those positions has been terrific and has helped bring that glue a lot tighter around us.
I'll just add one thing.
You got to come up to the mic then, sir. Yep. Your voice projects, but not to the people at home.
Dennis Collins, I'm the president of the Kishawaki Water Reclamation District. And this is a win-win for our community, two taxing bodies. What's happened in the past is there's been duplications of engineering and costs to our citizens, all coming out of the same pocket. Some came to us, some came to the city. So in this case, it's going to streamline that. It's an absolute win-win. It's been wonderful working with this council and Bill Nicholas. As you guys know, you've got a really winning team here. And we do our part at the sanitary district, and now we're going to be able to save everybody some money when it comes to building or when it comes to engineering for our district. So thank you.
Thank you. We love hearing that. For me, when I'm in the chair and he knocks me out, and I hope he's gonna wake me back up, my trust level is incredibly high. I would take a motion to waive second reading?
You did that.
Did we? Who motioned?
I did, and that's Zazada.
Okay, so we have a motion by Alderwoman Larson and a second by Alderwoman Zazada. Roll call, please.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Zazada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
ADI?
Ordinance 2023-020, second reading has been waived. Number two, ordinance 2023, and by the way, Dr. Collins, you're more than welcome to leave. We won't take any offense at all. Yes. Ordinance 2, I take a motion to bring to the floor, ordinance 2023-021, authorizing an amendment to the special use permit approved by ordinance 2020-044 in order to extend the timeframe for a modular classroom to remain on the site at 1121 School Street, Little John Elementary Stool. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved. Second.
Moved by Alderman Walker, seconded by Alderman McAdams. City manager.
Thank you, Mayor. This is another item that the Planning and Zoning Commission took up on May 15th. It's an extension of the timeframe for a modular classroom, as the title says, at Little John Elementary School. There are plans afoot to do some new building and some new configurations and within the DeKalb School District. And it's the intention of District 428 to have a new school at Normal and Ridge open by August 1st, 2025. So this particular extension would expire in the middle of August, 2025. Planning and Zoning Commission thought that was a reasonable extension, and we support their recommendation.
Council, any questions, comments? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Walker?
Yes.
Zazada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
ADI?
Ordinance 2023-021 passes on first reading. I take a motion to waive second reading?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Perkins, seconded by Alderman Walker. Questions or comments? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Zazada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
ADI?
All right, second reading has been waived for ordinance 2023-021. Then we'll move on to item number three, ordinance 2023-022. I have a slew of public comments. First, I have Shrestha Singh. I know I got that wrong. I apologize. Oh, wonderful, okay. And just a reminder, you've got three minutes, ma'am.
Thank you. Well, hi, City Council. My name is Shrestha Singh. I live here in DeKalb, and I'm a licensed social worker. Woo, sorry, didn't mean to move this. I'm a licensed social worker and psychotherapist. I also have a background in public health. I want to ask a few questions about this proposed city ordinance that seems to be in reaction to the incidents of juvenile violence that happened a few weeks ago in DeKalb, particularly about making parents responsible for their minors' actions and instituting fines on them. So I'm someone who's about to become a parent, raise our kid in DeKalb, and the events of the last few weeks were definitely deeply alarming. And I feel a lot of concern and sadness about whether our community is truly safe for our children. And so I get that there is a lot of fear and worry about our young people's safety and behavior, understandably. So what happened was really scary. And at the same time, I am really wary of this ordinance. And I just have some questions. Like, I'm wondering if in creating it, there was conversation with community members, parents, teachers and social workers at DHS and more who are working with, within the community directly with youth about what they think would ensure greater safety and wellness in our community. I'm wondering if organizations like Family Services Agency or Black Inc., who actually do work with young people in DeKalb, have been consulted, or the Public Health Department, because they see violence and lack of safety as a public health issue. So I'm just wondering if this parental responsibility ordinance, folks have been consulted around that. And the reason I'm asking is because the ordinance seems not that evidence-based and a bit rushed. And I think it just needs more consideration before the council really decides on it. When I was getting my degree in social work, I learned a lot about the ways in which fines are not actually an effective deterrent to violence. And there's actually a wide range of research on how parental responsibility ordinances, like the one that's recommended to be passed today, don't actually work, unfortunately. The laws tend to hit poor families worse than rich ones. They can endanger and pull apart families. They can cause more issues in homes, or violence and abuse is happening, can worsen kids' behavior, and honestly, are mostly enforced against poor, single parents, especially black women. So there's not much data on their effectiveness on targeting parental apathy, parenting, reducing juvenile delinquency, et cetera. So as wonderful as it would be for us to have a clear solution, I just urge our city council members to not rush into it. Gather more evidence and data from the community and those who do work on the frontlines and work to imagine other solutions as well. And I hope you'll seriously consider what I'm saying. Take me and other people who have knowledge on these issues into consideration. Help consult on it.
Thank you, Shrestha.
Because I just worry that it would cause deep harm instead of protecting our community. Thank you.
Appreciate your comments. All right, moving on to Dwayne Brown. And just a reminder, three minutes, sir.
There have been three homicides in DeKalb recently and several incidents involving minors. One was a stabbing. We all want to prevent this type of behavior. However, this ordinance would only add more layers of bureaucracy and redundancy to already established rules, regulations and laws. This proposal is not the answer and should be rejected. The real problem is in the homes of these children. Some of these troubled youth come from single-parent families, and some are latchkey children. The accountability of these children's actions is the responsibility of the parents. Social media is a big factor in this problem. Look at Chicago recently. Look at Tenley Park yesterday. Look at DeKalb last Friday. They text each other and meet at a set time and place, and trouble ensues. Socioeconomic factors that affect children are bountiful, such as family income, educational, community safety, social support, hunger, access to academic materials, access to computers, exposure to violence, and somewhere, and somewhere someone lives. Socioeconomic status is an important factor influencing cognitive, social and brain development. There are ways to address these issues. Teachers can teach with their social needs in mind, address health concerns, be creative, teach inclusion, show affection, give praise, respect each child, and challenge the students to achieve high expectations. Schools are often based around middle-class norms and values. Inequality is a problem in schools. Behavioral problems could be prevented at home if parents would develop a healthy relationship with their child. Make the rules clear. Explain the consequences. Provide structure. Praise good behavior. Work as a team. Talk about feelings and teach impulse control. What the city needs are strong schools, stable jobs and social networks. We need the police to go to schools, talk to the students, explain the consequences that that could happen. I went to the memorial for Gracie Sosso Cleveland on College Avenue. No one should die that way, and especially a 15-year-old girl. Thank you.
All right. Then we've got Mark Charvat. As a reminder, three minutes, sir.
I didn't know that. It's always fun reading the fine print. This ordinance is a rush job. It seems like a knee-jerk reaction. You're considering an ordinance that has not been properly vetted. The city has a commission called the Human Relations Commission. Perhaps some of you have heard of it. I know we had a liaison and a member previously who will serve on council. However, it has not been vetted in front of the Human Relations Commission. You wouldn't rush to pass a zoning ordinance without vetting it through the Plan Commission, now would you? Maybe nowadays you would. I don't know. Why bother having an HRC if you don't use its services? The events that sparked this instant ordinance took place less than two weeks ago. And here we have a pop-up ordinance already dealing with this? Granted, something needs to be done, but why the rush job tonight? This ordinance has also been written with lots of revenue fine. Anyway, this ordinance is written to levy lots of revenue fines. It says shall be punished by a fine not less than $300, not more than $1,000. There's also a new proposed fine of $500 in the ordinance. It's always about the money when it comes to this mayor, council and administration. Nowhere in this ordinance does it say where this fine money will go. Will the city use the fine money for education programs aimed at reducing this kind of behavior it hopes to address? No. Since it's not been specified, this fine money, of course, will land in the general fund to be spent on whatever pet projects the city administration sees fit, most likely spent on more $100,000 a year plus employees for middle-management staff here. You need to specify where this fine money will go. It's kind of like when you guys approved the gambling terminals and you complained about gambling addiction, yet none of that money went to deal with education regarding that? You need to earmark this money if you're going to levy these fines rather than using it for whatever. You have a problem to deal with. You're using the money. You're gaining money from this, but you have no specific location where these funds are going to go. That needs to be specified. Thank you.
All right, then we have Sid Kincaid. And Sid, just a reminder, you have three minutes, sir.
First, real quick, props to the public works. I was a citizen that experienced that water main going out, and they quicked it. They fixed it real quick, and I went down to the apartment office and they, I asked about it, and they said, you're the first one to say anything to us about it. So props to them. I don't get out too much, to be honest. I don't interact with a whole lot of citizens. But there have been a couple occasions I go out and I see people surrounding the apartment. I go out and walk my dog, and several months ago, I noticed a woman, her dog got out in the apartment across the street, chasing it around, trying to get it back in. And she picks up a large stick, and a yellow flag goes off in my head. And I have to say like, okay, well, maybe she's just using it to herd it, herd the dog back inside. And then she starts swinging it. And immediately, I have to switch to using my military voice, and I tell her, don't hit your dog. Don't make me call the police for animal cruelty. I don't know how long ago it was that Carolyn held a ward meeting, but I decided to walk to it. And in the, in the very next building to the apartment, I'm walking along, and I hear a woman yell at her child to get back inside. And then I hear a slap. I, I am at least aware that the citizens in this neighborhood are struggling. And the parents, if they're single or not, are not in the best financial situation. If you add financial stress on top of it, of what they have to deal with... If you add financial stress on top of it, of what they have to deal with, they're going to be taking it out on their kids. I don't want to have to be walking along the streets and yelling at a parent saying, "Hey, don't hit your child. Don't make me call the police for child abuse." What I would like to see is, you know, something similar. I understand that there's a need for deterrence for being neglectful, or just not taking action. But similarly, with the negligent landlords, with the crime-free housing ordinance, there's concern that we're punishing the landlords who are being responsible. Why not do something similar with the parents? You know, we've got something on the books that if we have to use it, we will, but let's not punish the parents who are trying to be responsible and just burdening them further. So I'd like to see the council entertain this more, try to include more restorative justice practices into the crime-free housing office. I think that that would be a better way to go. Thank you.
Thank you, Sid. All right, I would take a motion to bring ordinance, well, I'll take a motion to bring ordinance 2023-022, amending Chapter 52, Offenses Against Public Peace, Safety and Morals, Section 52-02, Disorderly Conduct, Section 52-130, Parental Responsibility, and Section 52-411, Nuisance Gathering, to the floor. Can I have a motion?
Tell them.
Second. Moved by Alderwoman Larson, seconded by Alderman McAdams?
Yep.
Okay. City manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I think it's, I should shuffle, reshuffle my presentation here and try to address some of the points that were made here in the audience, from the audience. First of all, I think it's absolutely essential that people in the audience understand, and it was said in the background, but it, I think bears repeating that, there is nothing that's proposed to you before tonight, before you tonight, that doesn't appear in state statute. In fact, the statute was passed first in 1976, and it's had three or four different revisions. I think the last one was in January of 2013, and it's called the parental responsibility law. And that's, I think, the focus of a lot of what people are concerned about. So what are we doing here? If we were to prosecute under this as a state statute, that means we have to go to Circuit Court. It elevates the cost for all concerned, the distress and the parental unease, much more than an ordinance violation that comes before a public hearing officer, an administrative hearing officer, possibly every other week at the police station. Fines are minimal, the possibility of restitution is always there, whether it happens to be a building violation, or happens to be a violation of our disorderly conduct ordinances. So what we've added here is just two things, okay? One is that, right now, if there is a, I'll back up, and I'll let the city attorney and Chief Byrd correct me if I'm wrong, but no juvenile and no adult has to give their name. If they're just walking on the street and a police officer walks up and has no probable cause to think a crime has been committed or is about to be committed, if a person has a gun in their hand and they're firing it off, all bets are off, okay? Just walking down the street, walking a dog, on a bicycle, whatever, if there's no probable cause, person can say, "Mind your own business." Can't be arrested for that. In this case, what we're talking about is what happens, and this is focused on juveniles. Same thing applies for, in most respects, sorry, there's always other considerations to adults as well. Again, if there's probable cause, if it's more likely than not that a criminal act has occurred, or violation, in this case, of the ordinance, or is about to occur. Pushing and shoving, pushing somebody out into the street, creating a nuisance that is significant and poses a threat to public safety, if that's observable, then the person would want to know who that juvenile is, so they can say, "Very likely, I'm going to ask that you remain here, we're going to contact your parents." How would we know who to call? Same if it was a violation of the peace in a school, how would we know who to call? Or on the school grounds, outside a school building? So that is something that's elemental. It's not extravagant, it's not hasty, it's a fact, and we can more quickly deal with the issue and mitigate or minimize the upset for everybody concerned. Then the other piece has to do with parental responsibility. So, once again, if a parent is aware, and the most obvious case would be a Bets, aids or a Bets, the commission of a crime, then that parent might be, might be, has to be adjudicated, and has to be brought, in this case, just before the administrative hearing officer, not to the court, lower fines and so forth. But let's say somebody, a 15-year-old, takes a bucket of paint and throws it on a neighbor's house, and the cost of repairing that and so forth is a couple thousand dollars. And the person, the juvenile admits to it, and the adult who is the guardian or the parent admits, "Yep, I saw him do it, told him to stop and he didn't stop." That person might be culpable. Maybe that parent's going to pay that $2,000, or whatever it happens to be, under this. But we're not elevating this to the court level, we're taking this at the administrative level. It's an ordinance violation. So why this? Because we saw some extraordinary acts of parental irresponsibility in the last couple of weeks that we have been seeing off and on. I get to pass along reports, have ever since I've been city manager. It's not the first I've seen it, but they were coming in rapid succession, over a period of days, and over the last couple of weeks. So when a police officer says, "I can't approach the person, I can't ask this person their name, and I see that they've committed a crime or are in the process of committing a crime," how do we enforce the peace? So that's what this is. It's pretty elemental. Have we ever talked to social service agencies? Are you kidding? This is what we do. We support the agencies that provide more long-term assistance to families that are struggling, whether it happens to be poverty, lack of education, whatever will diminish their ability to help in the home. And there are many reasons why that would be the case. So we're all over it. We have two embedded social workers that work with our shifts every day. So we're doing our best. We are recognizing here, not that this is the only answer, or the last word, but it's another tool. And I think it's very important to note, we've always said, and Chief Byrd has said many times, anybody would listen, we can't police our way out of some of the issues that we have, but we can, but the police are an important part of it. And this is just another tool. That's all it is. The ordinances are very clear. In your background tonight, it was redlined, what's going to change. Out of 10,000 words, there might be several hundred. That's what it is.
Council, questions, comments?
Yeah, I do, I got some.
Alderman Walker.
I'm sorry.
No worries.
So I understand where we're trying to go with this. I get it, you know, one of the kids who got killed was the kid I used to coach, so I do understand that this hits my heart a little bit harder than most. However, this is the problem that I have, because I come from, you know, I'm speaking about me and some of the kids I've coached, and some of the kids I know. I come from a single-parent household who was raised by a strong woman. However, I was a hard-headed kid who liked to get in trouble, liked to do things I knew I wasn't supposed to do. Now, I just don't understand how we can, and believe me, I get what Chief Byrd means by saying, you know, we can't police our way out of everything. I get it, that's why there are programs, you know, to help kids and, you know, things of that nature. But however, I don't really want to throw in, and I get it, we got to differentiate the bad parents from the good parents, I get that. However, I don't want to just be able to pass something through. So let's just say a mom who has reached out to, you know, multiple mentors or, you know, foundations for help, and she's just not getting it, and her son is still, or daughter, is still just doing bad things in the community, then that's, you know, then that's when, you know, we can find, you know, based on whoever's discretion, you know, if they cross the line or not. And so I just think that's a tool where they could use to do that. And I don't, and I just, right now, I just honestly think it's too early to kind of decide on that. I just think we need a lot of more clarity for this. And you did give some good background, and I get what you're saying, because I get it, I don't want to be a hypocrite. We have a horrible crime with kids. I know about the fight at the high school, and how it, you know, went around the whole block, and how, you know, our police get disrespect, and, you know, sometimes, you know, they have, you know, things out of their hand. But however, to go ahead and rush something like this, you know, just off of, you know, some of the things that's been happening, without properly sitting down and going through, you know, the proper channels and get more discussion, and, you know, get people, you know, who have a good background on it, I think that's something we should honestly, you know, do more, because just throwing, you know, ordinance out there, and so police or whoever can just stop kids, and, you know, ask them for all their information, depending on whatever they did, I just don't think it's right, because there are some kids and some parents that are actually just good, you know, law-abiding citizens. And I know a lot of women who I've helped out who have hole-in-the-head kids that, you know, sometimes they just don't care about their mom in that situation. But I don't think it's right to be able to even think about finding them for something that their kids did. So for me, I just don't think we have enough clarity, and I just don't think we have enough information right now to push anything like this through right now, because honestly, to me, it does feel kind of rushed.
So, and just to be clear, the state statute, you said, like, we're not exceeding that or doing anything else. So how do we prevent, like, right now, I would assume our officers could enforce the state statute? Is that?
Correct, yeah.
And they don't, and I assume that's because of discretion, right?
Well, that's, the clarification of the parental responsibility state law is, that is a private cause of action. So that, and this is, this is what we're concerned about with the parental responsibility law, is the state law creates a private cause of action for somebody that, where a minor has caused injury to one's property or one's person, they can sue the parents, whoever's been injured, up to a certain amount, right? And that, people that can sue can be the city, could be a police officer, for example, could be, you know, John Citizen next door who got injured in Bill's paint example, right? But, so that exists at law, it's existed for about, you know, 35, 40 years. The last 10 years or so, they capped the limit of the amount of damages to about $20,000 that you could receive through that. So what the ordinance does here is that it doesn't create, it is still a private, it doesn't create this private cause of action, it says that if there is a parent of age minor who causes an actual injury, willfully and intentionally, to somebody else, then that parent could be subject to the same, you know, restitution that could be made up to that limit under state law, but that is brought before our administrative hearing officer, instead of being brought in a civil court, personal injury type of an action, is what I would say. And it can only be brought by the city. So it couldn't be brought by John Q. Citizen, who gets injured, for that example. So there's multiple layers, then, of discretion that go into it. First, whether the officer would issue an ordinance violation for the parental accountability, and then it goes to, you know, the prosecutor, who would see whether the circumstances would be fit for that, you know, for that type of a violation, and whether the fines on top of any restitution should be sought, or whether there should be some alternative, you know, community service type of a program that would be had there. And then there's also, of course, a hearing before a neutral administrative hearing officer that would be had, where the parents would be able to say, "Hey, you know, this is what we did, we tried to do everything we could do." And, you know, they'd have, you know, the judge or the hearing officer there would be able to listen to that, and I guarantee you, in those circumstances, if they were found credible, if it even got to that point, to where there was a hearing, that the hearing officer would probably find in their favor.
And just since I asked a question, I'll get to you, Alderwoman Larson. For clarification, too, I mean, with the state statute, another private individual would have to file suit against the parent, let's say. I assume there's a fear of retribution, potentially, that might cause someone to not want to pursue that. This allows us to, with discretion, hold the parent accountable. I see this a lot as, you know, like in our crime-free housing, where there has to be a preponderance of evidence, you know, we're not just going to automatically fine, and Chief, I'm looking at you, too, we're not going to automatically fine and drag everyone to court for every time their kid steps a toe out of line. It's one, it's egregious, it allows our DeKalb Police Department to actually have some penalties for the parents to hold them accountable in a situation like that. Alderwoman Larson.
I just happened to be able to have lunch with a graduating high school senior, and was asking about the high school and different things. And I said, "So how many of these fights are different kids, or it's the same kids starting it?" He goes, "Oh, it's 10 to 20 kids, that's it. The rest of our kids are going through school, minding their business, learning, and you got the same 10." And I know at one of the other episodes, the horrible episode that happened this week, the police knew. It's not like they're, who are these kids? They know them, unfortunately. They've probably known them for the last four, five, six years of their lives. So I don't think they're just going to be stopping random kids to be like, "What's your name?" They know them. I think what really got me is reading some of the police reports and hearing parents had driven their under age, you know, didn't have licenses, to these events.
Fight the fight.
"I'll drive you to the fight." That is where I think it got to the point, okay, this is, you have to be held responsible because you are more than aiding and abetting, you are actually accelerating this, bringing it up a level. So I don't think these rules are going to be like, "Watch it, we're out for everybody." But you have to have a rule on the book, so when somebody does something, so, I just can't wrap my mind around it, that you would drive your child to an unsafe environment where you know things can get out of control, and we're not talking fistfights. Back in my day, I'm like, "God, they're pulling guns, they're just shooting without thinking." Why would you do that? I think that has gone, you have to have something on the books to protect our children. You know, if they're not going to protect their own child, then we have to protect their child, as well as every other child, as best we can. And you have to have the rules on the books.
I was on the scene on Kimberly when all that was transpiring. I had never seen anything like it. There was 50, maybe 100 kids out on the street. We probably had 15 officers or squads there. Our officers were exhibiting an incredible amount of restraint. And I remember standing there, and a mom came screaming in around the corner, almost hit the car in front of her, threw it in park, got out, ran over, got in an officer's face and started screaming at him. And I'm sitting here thinking, the only thing keeping these kids from causing real harm, and this was before the shooting, like, this easily could have escalated to a whole nother thing, were our officers trying to maintain some control, trying to keep the aggravated juveniles away from each other to try and maintain some sort of control. And here is a parent that I saw firsthand, just completely escalating the situation. And I know, and I hear that from our officers, we have parents out there that are the cause of some of the issues that we have, because they're helping, they're enabling it. Alderman Walker.
I just, I wait.
Go ahead, Chief.
No, I guess I just want to give a perspective from the law enforcement point of view. This is very, I mean, it's heartbreaking for me, it's heartbreaking for a lot of officers. This is a, some of this is generational. I mean, this is a layered problem. I come from a single-parent home as well, born on the south side of Chicago. And it takes strong parenting. And right now, I think parental control is lacking. In some cases, it's completely absent, unfortunately. We have very young moms, and some of these mothers are, you know, having children at very young ages, and, you know, even to the point where you have 31, 32, 33-year-olds who are grandparents. So let that digest a little bit. 32, 33-year-olds, grandparents, okay? And as far, you know, and you were there on the scene of that, Mayor, and most of the time, we're massaging this whole situation and trying to bring peace. So there are things that we are allowing So we're, there are things that we are allowing, you know, there's arguments, there's a pushing, we're not making arrests immediately. We're moving them, we're trying to move the crowd, we're trying to break up the crowd. At some point, in most of these altercations, we feel ourselves getting to a point where we're winning this situation, we got them separated, and then all of a sudden, you have one of the kids, they'll throw a bottle or throw a punch. And then now we have to act in law enforcement. So now we have to go hands-on with a child, which we really do not want to do. Believe me, it's the last thing we want to do is go hands-on with a child. However, some of the children are coming out with masks in their pockets, they're throwing on masks whenever they feel like they want to do something that they know is against the law or inappropriate. So they're masking themselves up. And the purpose for that is so they won't get caught on body worn camera, so we won't ID them, so how do we take action on them? So if they throw a bottle and they then run from the police, we, you know, we have no facial recognition on the offender, we don't know who they are. So we see that happening a lot. So they keep them in their pockets, they'll turn their back to the police, they'll mask up, they'll turn around and then they'll start fighting, then they'll run, or they'll do something that's inappropriate. To your point about the mom and, and I have empathy for any mother who is trying her best to control her child and teach them the right way to behave on a regular basis. I've had parents come into the PD and say, you know, hey, Chief, I'm doing the best I can, but I need, he doesn't listen to me, she doesn't listen to me. To your point, Alderman Walker, that's, those, I have empathy for them. However, there was a parent and I was there and I, and she pulls up, she brings her child, multiple kids, not, most of them not even her children, and she's antagonizing the fight. She's bringing them from one fight to the next. So you have a parent who's getting involved in a child dispute and to the point where it's physical. So to me, I believe that we should have options in lieu of fines, I believe parenting classes are appropriate. I think that's one of the things we have to do. I've been in contact with Family Service Agency, they are, they already have parenting classes that are mandated by, court-appointed parenting classes. I think those are options that we have, and we have to have a remedy for, because otherwise, you know, we really don't stop, we're not stopping anything if we don't have a remedy for it. So we need to have parenting classes. I believe social workers are paramount in a lot of these situations. However, I just want everyone to have a clear picture that we have children who are grabbing police officers from the, around their neck, grabbing police officers who are in the commission of their duties. So now, I mean, you have to understand that whole picture because now at that point, as law enforcement, we have to take action. We cannot allow for not just children or any adult to stop a police officer in the commission of their duties, that can't happen. So now we're going hands-on with thirteen and fourteen-year-olds, and believe me, we don't want to do it, but we have to. And, you know, and it's a very stressful situation for them because, believe me, they don't want to do this. So I just want everyone at least to understand that, you know, that this is a systemic issue, it's been going on for a long time. Even in City Chicago, you see it downtown, they're jumping on people's cars, they're attacking individuals for no reason. But when I see a parent who's trying her best, just like the young man who was involved in killing Officer Preston in CPD, one of the moms grabbed her son and took him down to the PD and turned him in. That is being a good parent because her son, she knew did something that she could probably could not even stomach and couldn't even believe, but she is strong enough to say, you're going to pay for the consequences of your actions and I'm going to hold you accountable. So those are the parents that we're really looking for. And to Alderman Walker's point, see a woman like that, a parent like that, yes, I believe me, I have empathy for her. I don't want to find that woman. If anything, I want to praise her for doing the right thing. But we also have the other side of the coin where you got another parent who's driving her children to the conflict and encourage them to have the conflict and be a part of their escape, be a part of, I mean, they're actively involved, parents, parents. So I mean, to your, we have to do something. Before you know it, we'll have, the same situation is happening in downtown Chicago if we don't put something in place. But I also believe, don't get me wrong, parenting classes are extremely important, we have to have them because we have to fix the problem. And it's deep-rooted, we can't change it overnight, it's going to take some time, but we have to have some enforcement component in place because we have to hold them accountable. And if we inconvenience the parents a little bit, maybe they'll act on behalf of the community. Thank you.
Alderman Walker.
Okay, yeah, I get that. Sorry, I understand all that, but here's my thing, and here's my issue, and this has always been my problem. How come we are always, and I'm to blame for this as well, but why are we always, we're never proactive, we're always reactive? And I just never understand that. And if it's about money, or if it's not about money, then how come, like Chief Bird says, we just don't send the parent and the kid to a school or a class that they have to pay for? Why does the city need the money? And like, what fund would you put that in? That doesn't make any sense to me.
Well, I, let's not get that, we don't need any money. I don't give a damn about the fines. I do care about the behavior and I do care about the family unit. And to the extent that families can help, there are some young men and women who don't, who are living with grandparents and others who, legal guardian or not. And that's, that's, that can or cannot, sometimes it helps marvelously and other times it doesn't. So it's not about the fines, it's about, so accountability sometimes is money and there's a little bit of pain there, but three hundred dollars, is that going to change behavior? Of course not. Is it going to make any difference in the city's budget? Of course not.
But it will hurt the parent, though. It will hurt the parent that you're fining.
Maybe, in the, so, it's not just as if, listening to what the chief is saying, and we have this conversation every week, what could we do and what could have been done? And are other agencies involved? Very often, yes. So if, in spite of all that, there's still an inability or an inattention to, excuse me, inattention to, because inability may be a legitimate reason why a parent can't intervene, but inattention, not as much. So if a person, and in this case, the mother is gone and then finds out about a horrific action was taken and confronts the boy and takes that person to the police department, we have, we have, as the chief said, a layered challenge here, a layered problem for our community. And so if we don't do anything, this is what I think you need to ask on almost anything that comes before the call, what if we didn't do anything? What if we just let it ride? So tomorrow, police officers can still not ask, and as they see somebody who's in the commission of a crime, who is a juvenile under the age of eighteen, can ask, cannot ask their name, and the person can run away and we can't see their face, we can't make recognition, and the person may do it again tonight, tomorrow, or the next day. So why would we not allow that piece?
And I guess, oh, I'm sorry, if I could say the last thing is that, and I understand, John, what you're saying, I agree with you, but a lot of times, I think, what we're thinking about more, and I talked to the city manager about this, in lieu of the fine, you go to parenting classes. So you bring, you know, you have a young man who, let's say he's fighting, we wrote you a ticket for fighting, you're not under arrest, we're not taking you into custody, we wrote you a citation. However, you have to report to court with your parent on whatever day that is. Ma'am, there's a three hundred dollar fine with this ticket. Or you go to three or four parenting classes, whatever that number is, you have to show that you've completed these parenting classes. If you do that, then the fine is null and void. And I think that's, but so, and John, you know this because you've been out there, you understand that some parents will decline to go to the parent class. They won't even, the non-financial option, they'll decline that. Or some won't even show up, you know, I mean, they won't even show up with their child. So what do we do about those parents? I, like I said, I have so much empathy for the, I told a couple of parents, like, parents these days don't even look at their children's phone. Every kid in my house, all three of my children, I pick their phone up every time I want to and I'm look through it. Well, Dad, that's my phone, I know I pay for it. So I know it's your phone, but I'm going to look through your phone. And you, you know, I can give you a flip phone, you want a flip phone, I can give you that, you don't have to have an iPhone X or whatever. But parents don't do that now. Oh, that's such private things, there's, no, it's not. And while he's living under your roof, you have control. And that's where, that's what bothers me about the whole parental control aspect, is that you're in charge, you're the parent. And at least when I grew up, and I know things have changed, believe me, I'm fifty-six years old, I understand it, but when my mom said, hey, you don't move, I didn't move. When I grew up, you couldn't step on someone's grass, let alone jump on someone's car. So they jump on people's cars now, you couldn't step on someone's grass. And here's one of the biggest things, all these adults in this room, you could see a child out there doing something wrong, you say, hey, stop that, believe me. In our day, you would stop, these kids will not stop for you. And you are elder, they don't even listen to you, elder. They don't listen to me, I was out there that night, Mayor Barnes was out there, we are grown men, we tell them to stop, go down the street. I don't care which, you know, get out of my way, I don't want to hear you, I don't want to talk to you. Forget that I'm the chief, I'm a grown man, I'm fifty-six years old, I'm telling you to stop. And they disregard us. So that's why at some point, and I, like I said, and I know everyone in here knows how complicated this is, and it's not, and this is not the complete answer, it is not. This is one layer, this is one tool in the toolbox. That parenting class is important, social workers are important. We have to be in front, like you said, John, we have to be proactive on a lot of these things. We're trying to have options, there's going to be a block party on Saturday, so Malia Jones came in and said, Chief, can you help me finance this? Yes, we're going to help you because we want to give the youth options so they won't do what we've been seeing in the past. We had to have a plan to be proactive for the summer. What are we going to do about the summer? How many days, let's find some summer fun days, couple of days out of week, teach children how to play chess, teach them how to play checkers. Some kids don't even know how to play these games. Teach them how to throw a football, if it's an athletic situation. So that's the proactive things we can do as a community, but at the same time, have social services out there while we're doing this. You know, so parents can get better. But I'm telling you, it's systemic and we got to work on it, you know, and I'm sorry for being long-winded, but I just, you know, when I talked to the officers at roll call, I had to have these same conversations with them because they're trying to do their best to be peacemakers, but they have thirteen and fourteen-year-olds who are trying to punch them in the face. And it's extremely hard for them to accept that because they have children their own and, believe me, they wouldn't take that from their own child. So it's extremely hard. So I just want, you know, this is a tough situation.
Alderman Perkins.
The thing I'm a little puzzled on is if there are already laws at the state level and we stick with the parent who was shuttling their kids around or these other things, if there are already laws in place, why do we need additional layers locally to be able to hold those parents accountable?
Yeah, there's, if I may, yeah, it's another tool in the toolbox. So for example, let's say that the ordinance violation is not as serious as a criminal offense, right? It does not involve jail time, even though it may cover the same conduct. So the officers then have the discretion about whether they want to force somebody through the criminal justice system or through an ordinance violation where you are, you know, if you have the ordinance violation, you are not going to result in jail time, even though it's the same conduct that could be in jail time. And there's multiple reasons why you would want to do that. In the case of juveniles, for example, you may not want to have juveniles going through the juvenile court and criminal system, and you may want to have them have this moment and have this opportunity to go through an ordinance violation process that would allow them to, you know, I'll use the term restorative justice because that's what the process is at that phase for juveniles. It's also much easier for these officers to issue in a flash mob situation like this instead of arresting a hundred people and having them booked and then, you know, sent to the Calab County Jail, it's easier to issue ordinance ticket violations. And hopefully that will deter the actual conduct that was occurring at the time and abate it and remedy it. And then, you know, at the, you know, at our level, if we cite them for an ordinance violation, then we can actually have control over trying to get the community service that's done. So for any minors that are cited with any type of an ordinance violation, they, it's the policy of the city manager that is enforced by, you know, the city prosecutor to require community service in lieu of any form of fine. And that would be a similar policy that would be done here for the parental responsibility if there ever was one. And the circumstances, you know, suggested that community service should be done in lieu of the fine. You have to have the fine, though, as the enforcement mechanism to require them to go to community service.
So what I'm hearing is, like, when the flash mob's happening, we're not going to arrest fifty to a hundred kids, we're not going to do that. I mean, because we know that, like you said, it's going to send them through the criminal justice system. Also, the manpower associated with trying to do that, process them, book them, release them, this is ability, I'll even call it a softer touch.
So there is something in place, but we're recommending something that's a lesser, a less impactful thing.
In some cases, yes.
In some cases, but that's where we started. So we've come around, here we are again. So I think that's the fundamental truth here. It's an ordinance violation, it's no worse in that respect than it is if you have failed to cut your lawn, except in this case, there's much more important and meaningful involved. And that is, you know, is the person who has been committing, maybe pushing and shoving, you know, but you want to try to sit and talk and maybe there is some social service involved, but so you can see, well, what are some of the good things I could be doing rather than doing this? And maybe that will help me. So that's our best effort. We can caricature this and just say, you know, it's a get-tough thing, but frankly, it's a get-smart thing and it's helping provide a softer way to invite people into responsibility.
But I guess, like, there is something in place and theoretically, we could just start arresting people.
Sure, yes.
This is a lesser option that allows social services to be more involved in the solution and we have more control of it locally.
Right, and we're triaging these, you know, like, so there was one, there was one individual who did the stabbing, see, he doesn't, I mean, we take him in, that's an custody arrest, he ended up at the juvenile detention center in Joliet because he committed a more egregious crime, more serious crime because he actually stabbed someone. So, so to your point, we're not taking everyone, we can't take, I'll be honest with you, we can't take everyone, it would be impossible anyway. So we just don't have the staffing, we don't have the manpower, we brought, even brought ISP in to come help us out on a Friday, DeKalb County also came in and helped us out as well, Sycamore, you know, so we had multiple agencies, but we brought them in just really for high visibility, we weren't trying to make mass arrests, you have to prepare for a mass arrest situation. So that was not the case and we did not want to do that. But, you know, there were children who were doing things or juveniles that were doing things and we know who they are, we just ID them later and we would get a warrant for them and we'll write them a ticket at some point, we'll have the parent bring them in, the ones that we can identify. The problem is, like I said, some of them are masked, they throw these masks on, we can't even identify them. So, and they might be, to your point, probably the most, the biggest instigators, the more violent youth that are involved, and I can't even ID him because he has a mask on. So that's, you know, so those are the type of problems we're dealing with, with these flash mob fights. It's very hard. Luckily, a lot of officers know them, we had our school resource officers that were on scene, so they were able to identify a lot of the, you know, the kids that were acting up. And, you know, one parent came and we told her, look, she's like, well, where's my son? We took him into custody, we put him in the back of the squad, but we did not, he was not arrested, we just wanted, he was a big agitator, so we wanted to remove him from the scene. Because if we take him away, maybe we can ease the situation. So we turned him back over to his mother, he was not cited, you know, but he was an agitator. So we, so we, you know, and she took him and we thanked her, she said, hey, you get in the car, he got in the car. Those are the parents that we are really, and we show empathy, we're not, we don't even need to know who you are, ma'am, thank you for doing a great job by parenting your child. Off you go. And I think, you know, we have to be mindful that there are some egregious crimes that are occurring, like, you know, anytime you stab someone, you know, you just raise the level of your action and we're going to take you into custody. But to your point, sir, we're not arresting everyone, a lot of them, if they're just watchers, they're A lot of them, if they're just watchers, a lot of them are just watching. Some of them are edging the other kids on. But to Alderman Larson's point, there are about ten or fifteen of them that are completely involved all the time. And we have to identify who they are and we got to try to get them some help and get their parents some help. If they refuse to do so and they want to keep acting up the way they are, then at some point, law enforcement is going to have to act.
Alderman Verbic.
Yeah, this has certainly been an impact for multiple agencies, including the building that we sit in right now. It was just recently where a number of children had to be excused from the library due to their behavior and such. But chief, you touch on some important parts, parental classes and whatnot. I know so many agencies are resource-challenged and, you know, money doesn't come from thin air. But how could we better work together? And I know you do work closely with agencies, but I'm thinking about a Decalhoun Children's Association where we could have participation from various governmental bodies as to how to provide that positive reinforcement. How could we take a better path than punitive? I understand punitive measures are a last resort in some of these cases. I'm sure it's been where, a situation where the positive reinforcement hasn't worked. But how can we work better together with the Regional Office of Education, with the school district, with the park district? To, I guess, since we are not the experts per se, how can we better partner with our agencies in Decalhoun to find a better pathway for certainly first and foremost, the child, but as a result, the parent as well?
So the city and community services in our community, some thirty to thirty-five, meet on a regular basis, talk about this every month. And there are some experts in the room, and one of them is Jennifer Yocum, who's our community services officer. Has been involved in social service for most of her adult life. And she's sitting in the back and I see her nodding her head. So it's not like we have to invent a new structure of care. That's there. But it's pressing all of us. This is sort of a newer phenomenon, not the first time it's been evident. But it's particularly acute right now. And so we're looking for things other than what we're talking about tonight to care.
And I think it should be an ongoing effort where governing bodies are pooling their resources to be able to find solutions that are consensus solutions. This is our smart way of proceeding through this to make sure, like a number of our children that have challenges, how often are they in school? Are they missing school? What is that partnership with the Regional Office of Education to make sure that they're getting to school and staying in school? And the parent is informed as to how important it is for your children to get to school. Because certainly right now, we have hundreds of children not making it to school every single school day. That's a component. So how, again, can we pool our resources to help overcome this?
Alderman Walker.
Hey, first of all, on record, on record, I just want to say, first of all, we've talked about the city manager and Chief Verbic. And I have the highest respect and integrity for both of you. And I know this is a thing that you've been bothering in your heart. So, you know, I saw Bill over there ready to fight me, so Bill, calm down. But no, I get it. You know, we talked about this a lot, so I understand where your hearts are and I understand that. But here's my thing, you know, before I close, okay? So it's kind of like at the schools, you know, you got the bad kids with the good kids. So I'm just like, sometimes, you know, it seems like we're trying to make excuses for why kids are bad. Sometimes kids just need to go to jail. So, you know, kind of to piggyback off a little bit of what Perkins said, or not even piggyback off of it, just, um, it's like we're lessening or we're babying some of these kids and some of these parents, you know, instead of just taking them where they probably should go. It's like we're kind of, you know, throwing them back in with the good kids and the good parents. So we're making orders, you know, those types of things so they can, you know, I don't know, we can figure out if they should, you know, get fined or not. It's just, it's a tough situation and basically I just honestly think, you know, the people need more clarity. I know I need more clarity. I guess I didn't do my homework or my due diligence like I probably should have, thinking about other things. But for me personally, I'm just not ready, ready to push anything like this through just yet.
Alderman McAdams.
So I want to say first that I am all in favor of giving the police department every tool available to fight crime. And that's where I start from. The Fifth Ward, I heard a ton of talk about this proposal from strong support to strong disagreements. And there's no consensus in the Fifth Ward, so I'm going to vote the way that I want to vote. And at this time, I would be a no vote only because I don't think we have enough data. I'm not sure that asking an adult to take responsibility for someone else's behavior is legal or ethical. I certainly, if Tracy were to do something wrong, you couldn't come after me for it. So the same process, even though they're children. I'm all for arresting children who are violent. I have no problem with that and I don't think that we want to take that off the table. And I'd like to see more data before I would say yes. I'd be a no tonight. Just because there's too many questions and I'm not sure that it would work. But I'd be open to suggestions. I think it's great that we're all talking about solutions. I think back to my high school days. To date myself, I dated what the kids say in the nineteen hundreds. I went to high school in eighty-four and through eighty-eight. I went to private school in Chicago, a school called Marist. My parents paid five thousand dollars a semester to send me there. There was a ton of violence and fighting there. I carried a knife when I was in high school, everywhere I went. I oiled the knife so that I could flip it open like a switchblade. And there were a few occasions where I had to pull a knife to avoid a fight. There were a few occasions where I had to fight and I observed lots of fighting. So this idea that the kids today are finally fighting and it was all golden back in the day, it wasn't that golden. It was pretty rough. At Marist High School, if you wanted to fight somebody, you'd say, meet me at the White Hen at three-thirty, which was when school was out. And there was a spot behind White Hen that was a meeting place for fights every day, all the time. The parents didn't do anything about it. The police didn't do anything about it. We settled it through fistfights. I'm not suggesting that that's the right answer, of course.
Definitely not. Just to be clear. No, we're being funny, but it's definitely not. And that's what we're trying to prevent here today.
And we have to do something. So I'm all, my ears are open. I want to know what options we have. And I personally think that boxing classes and self-defense classes in gym go a long way. When I think about what stopped fights when I was in high school, was that you thought you might lose. So if everyone in school knows how to throw a punch and everyone in school knows how to defend a punch, there's going to be a lot less punching. And the knives, if the kid pulls a knife and stabs somebody, arrest that kid. Like, I don't want anybody's hands held.
So.
One last, one last question.
Well, I get the last word.
All right, next to the last question. So the next to the last question to the council and to people in the audience, people looking in tonight is, how about, if we really want to get some hard information, how about the next time there are some roving groups of juveniles that are running around in the neighborhoods and fighting and all the rest of it? How about if we just pull all the cops and then see what you all can do?
So for me, having, it's a, I understand your point. For me, having seen what I saw, I was appalled. Just, I mean, I was appalled at, one, our youth, the congregation, that mass of a group and how they handled each other, and then to see how our officers handled themselves. What we're discussing here today is, there is state statute in place. Our police department, right now, could enforce it. We'll arrest them. We'll handcuff them. We'll send them to jail and we'll go down that process. Or we can implement these ordinances to put on a softer touch, try and engage the parent directly, build those relationships, force them to get the counseling that we were talking about, the parental guidance that we're talking about, the social services that we have in place. Like, we have to remember, we can't create a family service agency and a nonprofit and hire counselors. That's not what we do as a city. This is a tool that we have before us that can help our officers hopefully enforce and with discretion. And they have incredible discretion. Every ride-along I've ever been on, it's amazing how they are not looking for a fine to get money. They're not looking for arrest quotas. They're not looking for any of that. What they're looking for is be able to maintain the peace. So what we have here is an opportunity to be able to do that. We fund, and we got to remind ourselves when we talk about all the different things that we need to do because this is a layered issue that we have before us. And we're not going to fix it with this ordinance in any way, shape, or form. But we lean in hard with human services funding. We support our nonprofits. We just helped a hundred thousand dollar investment in a community center to give our youth something to do. Our police department is trying to engage our youth to give them something to do. We're trying to be as proactive as possible. What we have here is our officers asking, hey, this is what we'd like to do. We think it's going to be helpful. And the way I see it, I think this would be a helpful measure and I'm going to defer to our officers that are making that recommendation. Yes, Alderman Zazada.
I apologize. I know you wanted to say the last thing, but I want to explain. I didn't get a chance to say anything. I am also a no at this point. I found everyone's communication this evening from the podium up front very compelling. I can really see it both ways. I can see this ordinance helping. But I can also see that, you know, I would recommend some specific changes and shifting this to do exactly what the chief had said, shifting it to require parenting classes for the parents, shifting it to require conflict resolution classes for the children and certainly mental health consideration with the children along with that conflict resolution. I think if you put that instead of the fine, I think that this could be great.
Even though, for clarification, the fines there, in lieu of the fine, you can do these things. If you don't do those things, the fine's in place. So you're saying no money at all? Because then if they don't go to the class.
Then what do you do?
Then what do you do? Right.
We couldn't require them.
Sure. So is the option for the classes in there yet? Maybe I missed it.
Yeah, it's, the community service option is already in section one of our code. It's an option with every.
Which is already on the books.
Yeah, exactly. It's an option with every code.
Right, it's community service, but it isn't necessarily parenting classes and conflict resolution, right?
Yeah, it's an alternative, if you read it, the, our code, it's in section one and section seventeen, too.
So that would.
Our code officer would have that ability if it makes you feel better to amend the amendment to expressly include that as a potential, you know, or component of the penalty, then, you know, we could do that.
Just so you know the procedure, so there's a hearing officer there and a city attorney is there and there's a clerk taking the minutes and the record. And our city attorney, this gentleman here most of the time, can make a suggestion to the judge. The judge will say, and look at him and say, well, what about community service? And say, well, yep, and there's two or three things that have just come on, you know, we're aware of them now. We're happy to work with them. Or here's some, here's some things that have been very successful over time. In other words, things evolve, so it's not the same tried and true, three things, go down here and sweep the floor or whatever. It's more meaningful things to teach people a little bit more about collaboration, cooperation and so forth. So that recommendation comes from this person and then, and we see how it goes. So far as gathering more data, if we don't have this in place, we don't know how to do it. And so the question then really is about trust, isn't it? I mean, do the people here have the credentials to, do we have a history of being heavy-handed in that respect? No. We do ordinance violations every other week. Most people get to negotiate. So unless say they haven't been showing up and then the hearing officer, like any hearing officer or judge would say, we've asked you to be here five months in a row. You haven't shown up, so there will be a fine here.
Which is due process and everyone would have that. Yes, Alderman Walker.
So this is for Matt Rose. Can you lessen a state ordinance? You know, I mean, I hear we're lessening. Can we legally do that?
Yeah, we have homer authority to do what we're proposing to do in this ordinance.
Alderman Smith, I'm sorry, I skipped you, Alderman Smith.
Someone who's lived this, this is a yes or no, one hundred percent. We've got to give our officers the tools or this is going to be a failure for all of us. And what about our victims? There are victims here that are, you know, people who the stores they ran into, cars that were damaged. Those are victims that have legitimate, they can file legitimate complaints and have our kids arrested, period. We're out of the picture if they want to pursue that. This is giving chief and staff additional tools, period. The other thing is once, and Matt, you can agree, once it reaches the court system, it's out of the city's hands as far as any, whether the kid goes to jail, whether they're fined. By having this local ordinance gives us the ability to send them to counseling. The judge does not have to send a kid in criminal court to counseling.
That's correct.
It can be fine and it can be juvenile DOC. It can be wherever. So we need to get our apples together here, realize we are actually giving these kids a better opportunity than going to the court system. So I am a yes on this. Yes, I am.
Alderman Zazada. And then I'm going to call a vote.
I just want to say, too, knowing how bold the children were acting, putting their hands on police officers, I feel like that is an extreme crossing of a line where it should be reasonable. If they're putting their hands on police officers in a violent manner, then I think that's totally reasonable to, you know, be a little more heavy-handed. Because I would think.
And that's what happened. She was charged with a state disorderly conduct or a state, you know, battery to a police officer, but not an ordinance, a state charge. So you're a hundred percent correct. She crossed the line. And we took action on her, but there were a lot of other juveniles who didn't deserve that. Be honest with you, they deserved the ordinance. They deserved that opportunity.
Yeah, they don't need the full extent of the law slammed down on them.
This young lady did not deserve that. And I'll say this last thing, Alderman McAdams, you know, I respect you, but I'm going to tell you, your child is your responsibility, a hundred percent. I mean, your child is your responsibility. There's no way around it. You brought the child into this world, he's your, or she is your responsibility. There's no way around that. But I respect your thoughts, but I just wanted to, I had to tell you that because I feel like, you know, all three of my child are my responsibility. Anything they do, especially when they're younger, it was my responsibility to control them, to guide them and put them in, and make them good citizens. And so, and I know you have children and I'm sure you feel the same way. So I just had to say that.
But we're good parents. That's not the problem. The problem isn't the parent that wants to do good. The parent is, it's the parent that's going to get the fine and say, I'm not going to pay.
I was just worried when you said that.
Hey, we're good. We're good at this point. So at this point, I take roll call, please.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
No.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
No.
Zazada?
No.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Five yes?
So ordinance, excuse me a sec, ordinance two zero two three dash zero two two passes on first reading. I'm happy to leave it on the books for, till the next meeting, so we can have maybe a little further discussion. Allow people to get the answers that they need, maybe to change their mind or not. Does that sound good?
Yeah, more specifically, the measures in place to know how are we doing? So, you know, whether that's coming from chief or partnering agencies. So these incidents, are they being referred to all of the agencies? Yes, no, maybe? Then what happens after that? How are they making progress or not? I would like more information as we come back for a second vote on that in two weeks.
Good?
We'll give you everything we can.
Great, thank you.
All right, moving on to, we're at J now, right?
Back to resolutions.
Yeah, so resolutions. Number one, resolution two zero two three dash zero six zero, authorizing a five-year agreement with LRS for refuse, recycling, yard waste, hazardous household waste, and electronics recycling collection services. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second. Move by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman McAdams, city manager.
Thank you, mayor, and thanks to the representatives of the two companies that are up tonight for your consideration and for their patience tonight. Each has been promised a time to speak before you. And I suppose we'll go in alphabetical order. Sorry. We have a representative from LRS tonight who would like to address you on their proposal and then we'll go to Waste Management.
Good evening.
Ladies and gentlemen and women, my name is Katie Neary. I'm with Lake Shore Recycling Systems. You might also hear me referred to as LRS. I won't spend a lot of time on the history of our company, I think. But if you have any questions, please, by all means, stop me along the way and ask. But I do want to cover just a couple of things that you might not be aware of. One is that Lake Shore is a recycling company. We were founded as a recycling. founded as a recycling company. It's still our primary business. We're also a domestic recycler. We've always been a domestic recycler, so all of the materials that we collect from the DeKalb homes that are recyclable stay right here in the Midwest. Many of them are even recirculated through Lake Shore, and we make mulch out of the wood we collect and things like that. So, recently, in the past couple of years, due to what I'll call big waste consolidation and some other growth plans that we've had, LRS acquired a landfill in Henry County in Atkinson, Illinois. However, we do use the DeKalb landfill for the materials we collect here, out of DeKalb, the waste materials, anyway. So, I'd like to talk to you just about a couple program, a couple of the highlights that we have with this program currently offered and offered through this proposal as well. And before I get into that, I just want to mention a couple of things of note. I saw in the summary, which was a great summary. We do have a fleet of CNG trucks. We have done some research and we're leaning towards electric. Electric isn't necessarily great in rural areas. There are some areas out here that, you know, are kind of considered rural. However, that is underway right now, so I would assume in the next five years or so, we'll be using predominantly electric trucks in northern Illinois. So, hopefully by the next time, if there is a next time that I'm standing before you, and you're still here, we'll be using electric trucks out here. So, just a few features about the program that we have that you might already know. You all live here, I'm assuming, and so we pick up an unlimited amount of garbage, waste, and recycling from your homes every week. We also offer food scrap collection in conjunction with your yard waste collection, so you're able to put your food scraps in there. I don't know if you're all aware of that, but please, you know, that's something that I think that a lot of the residents really do appreciate and like. Another feature about this program is our household hazardous waste collection. We started a home collection program, actually in 2018. DeKalb was one of our first programs that we rolled out. I was very fortunate to be a part of developing that program for our company, and I can tell you it's been a big hit. And DeKalb, they love it. So, residents simply just submit a request online. They can also contact us, and we, you know, it takes less than two minutes to fill out a, a request online. We'll send them a kit, and within a couple of weeks, generally, we will pick that up. And most of those materials that we collect, or a certain percentage, I should say, are actually recycled, including the fuel and oil and things like that, and the paint. So, the other part of that is our electronic waste program. So, there are two separate programs for us. We handle the electronics in-house, and then we use a local, very well-known electronics recycler, a non-for-profit company based out of Elk Row Village, where they take very good care of the materials that are collected. There are two state-certified facility, which just basically means that the state of Illinois gives their stamp of approval on the way that those are handled. So, we have, as well, LRS handles, sorry, I, I believe, I think anyway, we do a great job at the curb here, and that most of you, if you've had, been living here at any amount of time, you probably haven't noticed a huge difference from, you know, when we transitioned over. And so, I hope you feel the same. We're not perfect. Obviously, we've had some growing pains. We've increased, you know, staff and technology as we've grown, so, but we do recover very quickly. Hopefully, you've experienced, had good experiences with us in that way. And we also have several employees that live right here in DeKalb. In fact, the gentleman that oversees the city of DeKalb contract lives right here in DeKalb. And finally, we also have, although this isn't necessarily impact the city, I think it kind of does, if you're not aware of this, LRS has the LRS undergraduate student success center now located in the NIU College of Business. And finally, we are generally the primary sponsor for the Corn Fest. So, I'd be happy to take any questions that you have.
City manager, do you want any comments, or should I just open up for questions?
I think we should let both present and then answer comments.
Any questions, comments? Yes, Alderman Perkins.
I do have one. Specifically, on the customer service side of things.
Yes.
What can you do so some, when someone calls in, they can get a real body?
Yes.
I had an incident last week where I was on the phone for literally hours, and was passed around to, to multiple people, and actually had to get to a point where I had to elevate it in the organization to get an answer.
Yes.
And I, I can't believe I'm the only one in the city having that issue. So, what corrective actions can you put in place to deal with that?
So I was the one that, you spoke to, by the way.
And thank you.
You're welcome. So that was kind of a rare circumstance. We don't have consistent issues with customer service. That is part of a technology kind of transition that we're going through right now with our phone system. So last week, we just experienced an enormous amount of issues with that, implementing that. So this week, we should, it should be better, as far as I know. So, we have people that answer generally within under two minutes is our, you know, hold time on average. So what you experienced, and I looked into it very, all the way, I know how long you are on hold, the different situations you went through, and I apologize for that. You did not deserve that, and nor would any, any person. If, if that was the case all the time, believe me, I would hear about it. And it wouldn't, you would all hear about it if that was the case all the time. So, I do, I am very sorry that, that you experienced that, and I can promise you right here tonight, that is not the norm. So...
Alderman Walker.
Uh, you know, well, thank you for your proposal. Let me say that first. Good to have you out here. But, you know, I will say, I have similar, you know, issues than my ward has. And the first thing, you know, when I was telling people I was running, they had a big issue with LRS. And the main thing is, and I know we all have growing pains, like you said, I get that. You know, I believe you guys came around a COVID time or whatever, and I would like to get to whoever else, you know, for their proposal. But, um, what's, you know, I would like to know the turnover rate for drivers, because me personally, I've had my garbage missed probably once, once a month, by my recycle, for some reason. And I've noticed, I, you know, I have to help pay your, uh, help do some of your duties, because I got to pay the neighborhood kids to go pick up all the garbage in my cul-de-sac every week, for some strange reason. And I've asked, you know, your, one of your route drivers, and I get attitude. So, I, you know, I, I, I understand, you know, you guys came in with the, you know, lower proposal, I get that. But I guess, you know, I would like to see what you guys can do for better service, and like, you know, Alderman Perkins said, you know, better ways of, you know, getting in contact, you know, with you guys. Because, you know, out of my ward, I've heard a few people saying they honestly tried to get ahold of somebody, but was on, you know, a call for too long. So basically, I would just like to know, you know, what you can do to, you know, improve your service, and if you are lucky enough to get our service, you know, you know, maintain it, you know, to the best of your ability. That's all.
Yeah. Well, I appreciate, thank you for, for, obviously, this is something that I would want to know and want to hear, so, even if it's painful, you know. So, thank you very much for letting me know that. And as far as the turnover, I mean, I can tell you, the recycle driver that I'm aware of anyway has been here since 2017. It's the same driver. It might be somebody different in your ward, or it could have just been a coincidence through certain weeks. I don't know, but, so you say you spoke to him and he was not very pleasant, it sounds like. So, I apologize for that. I don't know. I don't know why. And I definitely will look into that. So, as far as the calls go, like I said, I mean, we don't have long hold times generally. We go through some transitions, just like every company, certain seasons, certain holidays, we generally get more calls, you know, and every holiday. I mean, that's usually the highest peak call volume, but, I mean, I, like I said, I, I would absolutely hear about it. So I don't, I, you know, sometimes there's just experiences that come up, and then it seems like it's all the time. I'm not minimizing by any stretch what you're, what you're saying, but I do appreciate what you're saying, and I will take it back to my people and make sure that everything is improved. So what I can do is that, and I can promise you that I will do that.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Alderman McAdams.
I'd be remiss if I didn't say that my residents in the fifth ward have been largely critical of LRS and have wished that we hadn't changed services. I have tried to intercede on their behalf multiple times, and I've had excellent experiences with your customer service staff. But I introduced myself as the alderman, and I think that that kind of changes the ten, the tenor of the experience. My residents do not have that same benefit. And so I've had to step in multiple times to, to call you guys. We have had multiple requests for more garbage dumpsters. Apparently, the previous waste management had dumpsters available and for overstock and for, you know, if you have just way too much stuff. So every resident that I've talked to has requested that we request that the next time the contract come up, so.
Thank you, Alderman McAdams. So, I, I think that what you might be referencing is the landscape waste dumpsters, maybe, and that was part of the program change that the city determined not to offer anymore. So if that's something that would, you know, we would certainly be willing to take a look at that. And as far as your, what, because I just want to address that, because it's very important to me, the complaints that you're referencing, that you're hearing from other individuals in your ward, is it still happening now? I mean, or is something that you've heard in the past?
It's missed garbage. It hasn't happened recently, but it was missed garbage. There was a lot of, they never came and picked up my garbage.
So sometimes what I find is, you know, if we, for whatever reason, change the time that we pick it up, this is just very common, you know, and we try not to do that, but sometimes it, you know, there's various things that come up when you're driving, you know, three different trucks every single week throughout, you know, almost 10,000 homes or 9,200 homes. So, I mean, that's usually what we find, and we are very, we do a lot of courtesy pickups, because I get the missed pickup reports, and I look at them. And generally speaking, I've been doing this for 30 years now, worked for many different companies in this business, because they change often, but they're narrowing down to like five right now. So, I would say, really, DeKalb has a pretty good rate, and there's not a lot of missed pickups here in general. But sometimes, like I said, you know, when you're the one in your role, you hear a lot more. And then when I, oftentimes, I, we have cameras on the trucks now. We have what's called Third Eye. And if we need to reference videos, as soon as I mention to someone, just in general, like, well, you know, I'm going to pull that up and look at what your experience was, and they're like, well, I did set it out late. Okay, well, so, but we do go back, so.
Other questions or comments? I think the only thing I, I've had half and half, happy with you, happy with waste management. So I don't have a, a dog necessarily in the hunt, but what I do see and what I do hear is, you know, windy days, cans get dumped, garbage gets blown away, blown around. I don't know if there's anything you guys could do about it, but I, I think what I hear sometimes is, when it's egregious, obviously, a bunch blew out of the truck or whatever, it'd be great, whoever gets the contract, that the driver takes a moment, hop out, pick up whatever he could. It'd go a long way with the residents. Just seeing that alone would be wonderful, so.
So I'll tell you, what we do have on the trucks now are nets, and these are front-loading trucks that service the neighborhoods of DeKalb. And so when the container is, as soon as it goes in, there's, there's a net around it to keep it from blowing, you know, blowing all over. As I just, you know, one of your drivers actually gets the most compliments in the entire company. In fact, he was recognized for it, because we gets, but I don't know what ward he's in, and somebody in here is going to know which ward that is, because...
It's probably mine.
Yeah, it's, he's phenomenal. But, and I guarantee you, he's going out and collecting it. And I, you know, I drive out here often, and I'm in the rural areas, and this year has been windier than normal, so sometimes when it's really fresh on your mind, it's like, but just driving down like by Cortland, wow. I mean, there were a couple of days out there, it was just garbage everywhere. So it just depends on also the extra containers people use. They put out, sometimes they put out containers, their own containers without anything, without a lid. That's not good. Or they leave their recycle cart half open with stuff sticking out, and then the wind just, and then the stuff comes out, and it's just so. I'm not making excuses. I'm just telling you.
No, I get it.
It's real. So, I, I appreciate everything that you've said tonight, though. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Waste Management? And you told me your name, but, yeah, if you could repeat it, I'm sorry. It's been a kind of a long meeting.
My name is Vaughn Kirchner. I am Waste Management's public sector rep for the city of DeKalb. And also with me tonight is Casey Schlescher. He is our ops manager at our DeKalb site. And also Chris Rooney, who is our senior district manager that oversees our whole operations in the area. I think we also have a couple of drivers in the, in the meeting here as well. So, I really appreciate the time tonight. I'd like to take a few minutes just to highlight our proposal. It was a pleasure to work with Brian and, and Bill on the RFP. I think it was very well done. Waste Management and city, the city of DeKalb have a long history together. Waste Management was the city's waste services provider for over 20 years prior to the current contract. The partnership was enhanced because Waste Management has been and continues to be a local community business for over 30 years. At our local hauling site at 115 Simons Avenue, we have 32 employees, 15 of which live in the city of DeKalb. So we truly are community partners. We live, support, and contribute to the success of the city of DeKalb. WM's hauling site within the city would allow us, just like it did before, to react and respond quickly to any city need or issue. We are a local company with regional and national resources. This is an important contract for the city of DeKalb and Waste Management. We understand that price is important, especially in today's economy, but we feel that service and the value add are just as important, if not more. Waste Management's at-your-door special collection service is such an important service to the residents, the city, and the environment, that Waste Management will include this service in our proposed monthly rate. WM's at-your-door special collection is unmatched in the industry. It is the best solution for residents to properly manage household hazardous waste and electronics. We make it easy for residents to dispose of these items by collecting materials at their door safely, easily, and responsibly. Residents may use the service as often as they need and whenever it's convenient for them. One of the benefits of this service is that customers, that customers appreciate is that 85 to 90% of the material we collect is recycled. So it truly is a recycling program. Some of the other highlights from our proposal is our exceptional service and experienced drivers. Reliable quality service is important, and WM has a 99.9% service accuracy. 99.9%. We are familiar with your neighborhoods, your streets, and even your residents. Our DeKalb drivers average more than 20-plus years of experience. That's a lot of experience. Waste Management will provide stability and consistency backed by innovation, value, and best practices. Safety is one of WM's core values. WM's goal is to keep our employees and our customers safe. Our safety record is unparalleled. Our corporate promise that we share with our team is get home safe every day. One of our popular programs is our Waste Watch program. Waste Watch is a community watch program where our drivers work with local law enforcement, alerting them to anything out of the ordinary. And after hearing some of the things that were talked about today, I think this would be a great add-on as far as our service for the city. Likewise, Recycle Right is a highly effective curbside recycle education program, helping residents recycle right. Waste Management is the largest recycler in the country. We are investing millions of dollars, if you had a chance to look at our sustainability report, millions of dollars in our, in sustainability, and especially in recycling over the coming years. All our material that we collect here is sent to processing facilities within a 250-mile radius of our processing center in Hodgkins, Illinois. Hodgkins, Illinois is a state-of-the-art facility. It is actually where we test different things that we, our company wants to try as far as for improving recycling, reducing contamination. So it is a test facility as well. Waste Management also has what we call smart trucks that document trash and recycle collection at every stop for real-time positive verification and documentation of any collection or contamination issue. This is something new that we have implemented, and it's really taken off. Something that we're very excited about is in 2026, we are going to be converting our DeKalb site from diesel fuel to CNG, compressed natural gas. CNG, as we call it, is a cleaner burning fuel producing less carbons emissions and reducing the, or improving air quality. CNG trucks also run quieter than diesel trucks. So I can say that in 2026, Waste Management will have the CNG trucks on DeKalb streets. Now Katie mentioned electric. Electric is something we... we have test marketed, um, out in California because they have very advanced environmental laws. As of right now, is still in the testing phase because the elec, electric batteries are not lasting typically more than what? 25% of the route, if that, and then they have to go back and recharge. So it is something we're looking at feasibility, not sure when that will come through. Indemnification, the city's refuse will be taken to Waste Management's DeKalb landfill, allowing us to internalize the material and provide the city with assurance that your waste is being managed in compliance with all county, state, and federal requirements. The close proximity to the DeKalb landfill allows our trucks to quickly return also to your streets and service your residents. A couple of customer service, um, items I want to touch on, we have multiple ways that you can reach out to us. Um, not only do we have your typical call center, which is local, but we also have the WM.com website. We'll develop a local website specifically for DeKalb. We have in recent years developed our phone app, um, where people can actually contact us on their phone. We have live chat. So a variety of ways to communicate with us. In our proposal, we also included that residents may rent additional carts, including a yard waste cart. So we are excited about a proposal we have in front of you. Five years ago, the council room was full of residents stating how much they liked Waste Management's service. Yet we left that meeting that night without the contract. I'm still unsure why or how that happened, but I want you to know that we want, uh, we want your contract back. We want to service the city and the residents again. So I also again have Casey here with me. Can Casey say a few words, Bill?
Okay. Absolutely. Come on, Marine.
All right. Public speaking, it's not my thing. So I'm going to get real sweaty and real twitchy. It's, it's normal.
If you're Army, you would be a great public speaker.
I was a soldier as well. So cool, cool. All right. Uh, like I said, I'm the Site Operations Manager at the DeKalb shop. Uh, first I'd like to thank all the drivers for showing up. Hard day. You guys are up before the crack of dawn, out there working, and now you're in here, both WM and Lakeshore. So thank you for coming. Uh, biggest sticking point, cost. You know, where is that cost going to in that, that, that delta? Uh, so we're looking at, I'm not a glass half-full. I'm not a glass half-empty. I mean, glass gets knocked over and destroyed. What do we do? Um, us being the local guy, we also had the backing of a six-plus billion dollar agency. So storms rip through, tears up DeKalb, runs down 38, veers off into neighborhoods. That's a phone call. We're opening the landfill. I'm getting resources up here. My boss is getting resources up here. We're flying people in. We did this for the Pentagon after nine 11. We did this with Katrina. We did this in Alabama, Mississippi, Florida, all up the eastern seaboard. We can do that. We have the resources. Um, that is, that's a 24-hour turnaround. I mean, we have guys on flights. We're an SDO company, so service delivery optimization. We're regimented, we're standardized. All our drivers know, come in, they get the playbook. We have the, uh, you know, we give them the lay of the land. Here's your maps. Here's a section. Here's your area responsibility. We're on it. We're out there moving 24/7. We're bringing in those guys. We're getting that power there. So we're that silent security blanket that you guys want. You know, something's going to happen at some point. Is that $3 worth it? I'd say so. I know my man Mark over here is paying attention. You know, he's all about cost. I don't need him coming after me. So he's going to be there. So if he's not complaining, that's what we want, right? Uh, technology, it's also going to technology. Um, we have Third Eye. We have the fly swatters. We have NCAP, DriveCams that do AI coaching. Hey, you're driving too close. It recognizes the driver, tells me that on the spot. Um, you're distracted driving. You're fatigue driving. It catches if you're falling off, if you're going to sleep. Um, all this happens in real time. Our drivers have communication devices. Uh, it gives them all their mapping. It gives them all their, their stops. It lets them call dispatch, it lets them text dispatch, uh, GPS. I know where they're at. I know where they're on in their routes. We have a breakdown. We have a failure. I'm ahead of it. My team is routing people to go save it. You know, that all goes to our commitment to superior service. Um, I had a really good speech written. Obviously, like I said, I'm not great at this. I'm the operations guy. I'm better at screaming and yelling at people than driving that.
You're doing well.
Man, I appreciate it. But, um, safety, that's our number one. So that's what that goes into, these DriveCams. Uh, I've lost guys before. I'm not going to do that again with these guys. It's, it hurts. So that really drives it for me. That's it.
Oh, good evening. My name is Chris Rooney. I'm the Senior District Manager for Waste Management. So my area of responsibility is, uh, basically from, uh, 355 out to Rockford. I manage four different shops, approximately 200 drivers, uh, 30 technicians. Um, and, uh, it's a pleasure to work with, with the folks that I work with. And I'll tell you why. Um, I was an acquired employee. I've been an employee, uh, two times for Waste Management, once during high school and college. And then I took a break from the waste industry and then I was acquired. I worked for the fourth or fifth largest garbage company in the United States. We were acquired by Waste Management in 2020. Um, there's a significant difference between, be, be, between being number four and number five and being number one. And the, the significant difference is our, our investment in, in research and development and technology. And, and above all that, beyond the computers and the AI and all that, those other great things, it's really how we lead people. And the, the, the time and the effort that we take to coach and develop people. So we talk about the people who have been here for 20 years. They stick around because they're treated well and because they're paid fairly and they have good benefits. And we take care of their kids through a guild program where we, Waste Management pays for my kids and the, the children of our drivers to receive higher education. Right? Those are the things that make the difference in, in service and quality. And we measure ourselves every day. And every day I have a call with my leaders and I say, how did we do yesterday? And how are we doing today? And who did we fail and why did we fail them? Right? Down to individual addresses. And if we fail that address twice, then we get what's called a code red. And when we have a code red, it receives a lot more attention. We don't want to fail anybody more than once. We don't want to fail you once. We certainly don't want you to have to call us twice. And that's, that's really what we're about. Number one is, is safety, right? Everybody goes home safe every day. And nothing will ever, uh, trump safety, right? Number two is service. And everything else comes after that. So I thank you for your time and your attention. I know this is a, a big deal for everybody, but I want you to understand my perspective when it comes to working with different companies. Thank you.
Questions, counsel? Comments?
Well, I, I guess.
Alderman Walker?
I'm sorry.
No worries, man.
Hey, you can tell I should get in trouble while anybody's waving their hands. I'm sorry, Mayor Vars.
No worries.
Uh, yeah. So I guess the biggest thing for me is, um, just the price difference because if you guys lost the account, right, and you guys wanted us back, I just don't understand. And maybe, you know, I'm, I'm a UPS driver. I don't, you know, I don't do what you do. But, uh, I just, it just seems like it's a big disparity between the price difference. So I guess basically you said you have all these regional, national resources and I get that. I just, I'm just lost on why you are, just came in so much more expensive.
Well, again, I appreciate the question. One of the things, um, Alderman is, we feel very good about the proposal we have in front of you. We looked at all the services that were requested through the RFP and we met numerous times, um, a lot of times, uh, to review this. And we put forth our best proposal we can based on our costs and the service that we can provide. Um, I, I can't control what the market and the other haulers price of that. All I can look at is what we can provide for you as far as service for a price.
I will say your service is second to none. So I definitely can definitely attest to that. So, yeah. All right. Well, thank you. Appreciate it.
Other comments or questions? Yes, Alderman Smith?
Uh, real quick, I've had excellent from both. I knew some of your former employees, um, Ron Manus, long time. Uh, I've had very good results with LSR and response. Casey, a special thank you to you. I think you remember a problem that you solved very quickly. Um, really thank you on that one. That was, that one hit home, but he, it was a timing issue and he took care of it instantly. So, but then I heard from my mother-in-law and a few others about pricing. And that was the, honestly, the biggest denominator here was just literally pricing. So that's, you know, thank you for explaining it and I truly understand both sides. But, um, that's what I've heard in today's economy is just truly been with inflation, everything else. It's been, you know, some of our seniors and the, a little bit, every little bit from the cable bill to the phone bill, et cetera. So it is truly just cost factor for me. So thank you.
Understood. Thank you for your comment.
Others? None. Um, yeah, for me, I'll, I'll echo some of what, oh, will you? Oh.
No, you speak.
I was going to echo what Alderman Smith said. Um, I can appreciate incredibly that you know your business. You know what it takes to deliver the quality service that you need to deliver to represent your brand, um, as well as you know you need to make a profit as part of it, because that's, that's the whole, uh, business that you're in. And I respect you ma- immensely, uh, to know that and stick to that. And I can understand why you're more expensive. It's just for me, this is something that I got to pass down to the residents. I mean, it's not us paying for it. It's, it's, it's all of them. They're going to pay directly for it. And in light of all the inflation and everything that we've had, um, are you going to be maybe better serviced? They're most likely listening to this presentation. I would say that's the case. Um, I'm just really struggling with agreeing to, uh, what, 25% more, uh, to our residents, uh, one vendor over another. So that's where I, that's where my head's at. Now, I'd love a little feedback here because this is a five-year contract, um, that we're talking about. I don't know if anyone else has some additional comments at all? Or, yes, Alderman Perkins?
I do. And it's, and it's, I think it's all about the money. I think the, I have no doubt that the service is going to be better with Waste Management. And that's why I'm, I'm pounding the thought on saying, what are you going to do to improve service? Because it's, it's, it's a real issue. And I don't know, to me, I'll be supporting the lowest cost supplier this evening, but I want some recognition on the, on the fact that there's a service problem. You know, there are service issues that, that exist. And, you know, I think it's important to get those service issues on the record because at a point, the contract's going to come back up again. And I don't know if I'll be in this seat, but at that juncture, if the service issues continue to persist, it may carry more weight in that 25% difference. But the 25% difference, it's, it's real money, you know? And I think it's, I want to act in, in the best interests of our constituents as we can. And I think it's, it's not enough of a difference to me to, to move. So.
Alderman Larson.
And, you know, you're like, well, it's $5 a month. And that might be for individual homeowners, but $1,000 a month to the central business district, to a small company that's trying to get started to keep our downtown viable and, and bustling, that's $12,000 a year. That's not chump change. That's, that's, that's a lot. Um, that's what I'm having trouble with.
Yes, Alderman Zazada.
For me, it's just about the numbers. I, I don't think I can justify to the community that we wanted to spend more. So.
Hearing, yes, city manager.
You want me to say anything?
Yeah, please. Yeah, weigh in.
I'd sit it up probably for one night. Uh, well, I, I just want to say that Brian and I, Brian Faber and I have, have been working on this for some months. And I want to thank both of the companies and their representatives for the professionalism. You can see they respect each other too. Uh, at least the, the people who are presenting here tonight certainly do. Um, the background is very detailed. I want to thank, uh, Brian Faber for, uh, go, after, after we received the bids, uh, going through and really crunching the numbers. Uh, there, there's some, some deep detail, uh, going from the basic residential refuse services, which we, uh, are passing along in our water bill, as you know, it's the water and the sanitary and, and the refuse part of that. Um, and, uh, also the central business district, which is known to, uh, a number of people as well. But then there are other parts that we, uh, are, are going to pay directly for, not, it's not a pass-through. So the two pass-through pieces are the basic residential refuse, uh, and recycling and the central business district. So, uh, on the bottom of page nine, and the people looking in tonight can't see the bottom of page nine, so I'll just mention this, uh, is in bold words, uh, the, the essence of what all those charts are about. Uh, we, uh, currently have a price, a monthly price, uh, not, not including the, the administrative piece, which will apply across the board, uh, at, of $17.20. That was part of the 2018 bid and there's been an incremental increase in that for inflation. Uh, so what's proposed by LRS would raise the, the monthly, uh, fee for the single family or for the residential pickups, uh, by $4.69. So for the heck of it, let's say $5, easier to figure, times 12, $60 more. And then, uh, looking at the Waste Management, uh, price, it would go from the 1875 to 2625. And that comes to $96. So the difference is $36. It is, uh, it is tough for elected officials to wrestle over $36 a year, uh, when it's going to go for five years. It's not for three months or four months. And let's try the other guy. And we don't have a parallel system. It's win, it's all win or all lose. So, uh, the recommendation to you tonight was on price. I, I will say one thing about service where LRS is concerned. Uh, Katie Neary, as far as I'm concerned, is LRS service. She is extraordinary. I don't know without Carrie, or Katie, what it is because I haven't experienced it. Uh, so I will leave you with that.
Yeah. So Waste Management guys, however, I don't know exactly how this vote's going to go down, but man, we appreciate you, the landfill, all the other services that, that we work with you on. Um, it's just sitting up here. We, we had, we had to make a call on what we think is best for our entire community of DeKalb. Um, so it wouldn't be a comment on service or quality because I believe each and every one of you in what you said. Um, it just really comes down to can we pass that on to the taxpayer? And like I said, that's, that's where I struggle right now. Any other comments or questions? Yes, Alderman Walker?
I don't know if Mr. Rose or Mr. Nicholas can answer this. So is there anything that we can put in a contract or any some, any type of stipulation if we have, uh, you know, horrible, you know, service? Is there anything we can put in there since they're allowed to increase their, you know, pers, you know, their wages 4.5%? If they do win the bid, is there anything we can get in, you know?
I could say that, that, that may be a breach of contract.
That could cause a termination of the contract.
Gotcha. All right.
But it'd have to be an extraordinary pattern or, or a, a series of events.
Appreciate that.
And when we bid, uh, when we invited bids, we didn't lay out, uh, a system for calculating that, just such as say if we were doing a rope, we'd have, uh, liquidated damages or something like that. It's spelled out. You know what it is. You can decide whether you want to bid on it or not. We didn't have that. And it, we've always just tried to work things out. And, and we've been very activist and, and we have been served by the representatives of the companies, uh, who have been active in trying to solve the problems. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Yes, Alderman Perkins?
One for Brian. Great, great, great detail. The, the benchmarking stuff for neighboring communities, all the other levels of looking at things helped a lot. Compliments.
Agreed. Any others? All right. So the roll call will be, um, are we going to approve the recommendation by the city manager to approve the LRS contract? All right, roll call. All right, roll call.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Zazada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Ayes?
All right, so ordinance, nope, resolution 2023-060 passes. Again, thank you. I really appreciate your time, energy, and all you do for the community, and see you in five. All right, all right. Have a great night. You guys don't need to stick around, you've been here long enough.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right. All right, moving on to agenda item two. Oh, Katie, congratulations. Um, I hope you heard the, the service issues. And almost more importantly, Bill's comment about you are the service department in our eyes, I, I've heard that a lot, and that, but that, that's great for you, but it also shows there's a systemic issue that it has to go beyond you, and that's what we'll be looking for. Yeah, all right. All right, moving on to agenda, uh, resolution 2023-061, authorizing construction services with Hurley, mid-continent company, in the amount of $461,392.90 for 290 feet of water main replacement on North First Street across the Kishawaki River with a project total not to exceed $478,000. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman McAdams, seconded by Alderwoman Zazada. Uh, city manager.
Now, you read the background, uh, we looked at this back in September, and you may recall that the number was extraordinary. Uh, we look at this again with the company in place that's doing the crossing, it was better, still looks to me to be extraordinary, but it's better, and it's something we need. It, it, it replaces a, a section of main that will not last very long, and we have had problems with it, and it's going to be involved in, in the event, and it will happen, it's inevitable that we have to repair or replace it again, some even greater cost because we've got now the new bridge in place and, and we have to do some, some additional work. So uh, I, I think as that goes, correct in saying that this is something we should do now, we have money uh for this project uh at, at this lower amount in our water capital fund, and we recommend your approval.
Counsel, questions or comments? Hearing none, roll call.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Zazada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Ayes?
Resolution 2023-067 passes. Number three, resolution 2023-062, authorizing the award of a contract to current contracting incorporated, in the amount of $162,775.15 for the resurfacing of Lucerne Lane with staff authority to approve change orders up to a combined project total not to exceed $170,000. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Perkins. City manager.
Uh, so this is uh something that we, we bid out and had been talking about for a while at, at the staff level as well as the next one. Um, we had hoped to go a little bit further, but the, the low bid was by a single bidder, and it exceeded our, uh, what we had set aside in the CDBG funding this year for what's considered public services, which means, in this case, uh, infrastructure. And uh, it's uh, it's, it's an important project, and we recommend your approval.
Questions or comments, counsel? Hearing none, roll call, please.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Zazada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Ayes?
Resolution 2023-062 passes. Moving on, resolution 2023-063, authorizing the ward of, award of a contract to NTRAC Group LLC in the amount of $188,632 for the reconstruction of various Annie Glidden North sidewalk ramps with staff authority to approve change orders up to a combined project total not to exceed $190,000. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderwoman Larson, seconded by Alderman McAdams. City manager.
Thank you, Mayor. So this is a, another creative effort on, on the part of our city engineer to calm some uh, some potential conflicts at a major intersection in the Annie Glidden North neighborhood uh at Black Hawk and Ridge. And the uh method is to build some eyebrows at the four corners, which is not unlike what we have in the downtown area. So you, you, you narrow basically the crossing area, uh, it's a, ridge is extra wide, but it's just two lane, it could almost be three lane, and because of that, people kind of veer along. And uh, we, we did some paving on Gr- Ridge last year, or year and a half ago, I guess it was last year. And uh, but there still are people and children making the run across and, and people uh taking some risk in so doing. So uh, the concrete work is much of what is involved here. Uh, there's also some striping that has to be done, and there'll be striping uh in either direction, a little ways to make sure that we don't lose the on-street parking that is there, so there'll be some of that street striping as well. And I, and, and also, we're gonna take account of the ADA standards at each of the intersections, so the improved ramps at each of the intersections. So uh, we got two bidders for this. The low bidder was NTRAC Group. City engineer is familiar with them, thinks they're a competent company, recommends the approval of this, and I support him.
Counsel. Any questions, comments? We're looking forward to this, it's been talked about for a while. I, I know that neighborhood is, is really gonna appreciate that. Um, it's for the safety of the residents that live there, and I think it's a great addition. And again, thanks for being creative. You're, you're really good at that, man. Uh, hearing no other questions or comments, roll call, please.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Zazada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Ayes?
Resolution 2023-063 passes. All right, moving on to agenda item M, reports and communications. Counsel, Alderwoman Zazada, you wanna pick us off?
Sure. Um, I changed my name, so. Um, I got married last fall and decided to change it after the election, so, um, positive change.
Good. Alderman Smith?
No report.
Alderman McCaps?
No report.
Alderman Walker?
No report.
Alderman Verbic?
Ward Six Business District, very busy this month with the welcoming of thousands of both college and high school graduates to the Convocation Center. It's been quite a, it's quite a scene in Ward Six with the business. Speaking of congratulating, congratulating graduates, I'd like to congratulate our son, Michael, uh, from, for graduating from the NIU's College of Law this Saturday. Quite an accomplishment. Additionally, 30 years ago this evening, I made the most important decision of my life, and that was to say I do, to the love of my life, Jennifer, uh, who has, is making my service to this great city possible. I love you.
Congratulations.
Really, 30 years ago tonight.
Yes.
Wow. You might not make it to 31, man. Well, tell her we absolutely appreciate her loaning you out tonight. It was a lot to talk about, and your voice was a good one to have, so. Alderman Perkins?
No report.
Alderwoman Larson?
Um, two quick things. Um, I was honored to be at the Police Department um last week where they gave out um awards, and just a couple of, of things that meant a lot to me is, there was the history of some of the older officers and the roles they played, and some of the younger officers, but even the old officers were young. And so it just, that says more about me than you. But it was just so um, just wonderful to see all these young people being committed to DeKalb and choosing DeKalb, and um, and even the awards that were given by officers, they chose them, and that really says so much about it. So, so that was really great. And then on Saturday, I got to be downtown, and another um great kudos to our street department, because last year I was part of the planting of flowers in supposedly planter squares that were more like concrete. And this year, Andy and the crew got out there ahead of time, and it was just, they were the, we were done in like 45 minutes, you know, no hacking away. So, um, yeah, so the downtown's looking really good. Um, and Andy worked out getting perennials, it's totally pretty downtown, so that was my week.
Awesome. I agree, yeah, the planters are fantastic. Um, for me, uh, as early as this morning, I was in Cantini kicking off the golf outing for NIU alumni, and it was great, spent a couple hours just talking with alums, letting them know what's going on in the city of DeKalb, uh, talking about the Center for Greek Life, um, and just overall being a rah-rah husky, uh, so that was a lot of fun. Uh, also, uh, you know, I was humbled to be able to go to the Police Department's memorial service on Saturday. Uh, city manager Nicholas joined me. Um, it was great, it's, it's a service that they do every year, and they read the names of everyone who has served on the DeKalb Police Department who's no longer with us. So it was a, just a wonderful event, a lot of uh old-timers getting together and, and just sharing some stories. I think I stayed an hour and a half afterward, because, I mean, it was just great, um, listening to all the stories about what DeKalb was like back in the day. Um, uh, yeah, I'm gonna skip that one. Also, went to, uh, so, all five of us went to it, um, what, what do you call it? They called it a listening session, I wouldn't, um, but the, uh, New Hope Missionary Baptist Church, but they were just the facility, this was not the, the church didn't put it on at all. Um, but to listen to NIU speak and the community guardians um tell, um, it was an interesting evening. Um, I also met with the city manager Nicholas, and we met with the NIU's leadership team for our monthly meeting, which was always good, just to connect and talk about issues that we have and some joint issues and how we're gonna work through them together. Uh, went to the Citizens Community Enhancement Commission, um, man, the wraps that they're gonna do, like the wraps on the utility boxes, it's really cool.
They are so cool.
I know, and they're gonna do more downtown, which is cool. Um, and they just keep coming up with new things, uh, that is just bringing public art to the city of DeKalb, which I think is wonderful. Uh, also met with Brandon Elian, uh, is that, John, do you know?
Here.
You know, so John gave me a recommendation, that's one of the people that we appointed to the Citizens Community Enhancement Commission as well. Um, great conversation, I think he's gonna be an awesome addition to uh one of our commissions. I also went up to Rockford for the Northern Illinois Mayors Association meeting at ComEd's facility. Um, the uh, IML was there to speak, but also, R1 Bill, isn't that what they're called? They're the Center of, or Council of Government, um, that's kind of Rockford's in that, and there's a few others in it, but they were there speaking, which is interesting, I had to talk to you about that at some point here, Bill, uh, on, is that something we would like to pursue being a part of? Uh, also went to a Welsh Park event, uh, the NIU STEAM Center, um, or NIU STEAM Program, I'm gonna get it wrong, but they had a great after-school program where they brought a lot of science, technology, engineering, and math to the kids at University Village, it was well-attended, um, just a lot of fun seeing them all. That was after the Kimberly uh event, so I had two completely opposite spectrums on what things could look like, which is why I voted the way I did on, on the measure with the ordinance, um, because I want all kids to experience the beautiful part that was happening that I saw that day. And then I also went to the DeKalb Police Department Promotion Ceremony, that was, uh, that was just a lot of fun, uh, seeing some promotions happening on some very young people, um, but you're right, they were the old-timers. You know? Um, it's actually disturbing sometimes, when it's like, wow, yeah, okay, I, I mean, I'm getting old. Um, but it was a busy couple weeks, but a really good couple weeks. Uh, city manager, do you have anything?
Thank you. Uh, yeah, just real quickly, it's been a long meeting so far, and we've got another session to go.
Yeah.
Um, I, thinking about what Alderman Verbic said about uh his sitting tonight through a long meeting and a little bit more to come, uh, e- e- even though it's his anniversary, and uh, this, it reminds me of the sacrifices that are also made in public service. And uh, you can't have public service without the sacrifices. It used to be the sacrifices were appreciated and, and applauded, uh, the, the time away from family, the, the time on weekends and evenings when you'd rather be something, doing something else. But you knew that when you took the, the oath, and long before that, when you decided to run for office. So I thank our elected officials, especially as I think about this meeting tonight, um, it, it's so easy to caricature public officials in this country. There are so many egregious examples of public officials gone bad, and, and maybe because of the speed of communication, uh, it, it just seems that much more onerous, uh, and uh, and frustrating to us as citizens. But I know you differently, I work with you all the time, and I work with the people in this room who give their service every day, and I'm proud of it. And I think uh, it, I don't know how we fight that, it is frustrating for me, it overflowed in me tonight, because I, I, I know the, the, the discretion that is shown by our police officers and our firefighters and everyone else and, and you. So thank you for your service, and uh, I'm, I'm proud to work with you.
Becky. All right, um, hearing no others, uh, moving on to agenda item N, executive session, executive session, I would take a motion for the approval to hold an executive session in order to discuss the sale or lease of real property as provided for in 5 ILCS 120/2C6. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.